This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's three o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Gateway Service Community Development District to order at three o'clock on January 20th, 2022, and we'll have the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance, unified by the United States of America, and together with all of the religious standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to indicate that we have present today supervisors Law, myself, Tinkle, and Deppert, and on Zoom, we have Chairman Banks and Bill Guy. So our first motion would be to
I'll make a motion to include them.
To include them in the participation.
And find the exceptional circumstances as part of it.
Under, under.
Go to the other side.
Finding exceptional circumstances. Finding exceptional circumstances.
Yes, sir.
That have been going for two years, so they aren't too exceptional anymore. So we have a motion and a second call for the vote. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Then three o. Welcome on board, guys. How you feeling?
You do.
Thank you. I'm getting better.
Okay. Laura, do we have people that want to speak?
We do. We have two people that I have things, one is for a agenda item and one is for a non-agenda item. I do want to remind the people that are speaking, you get five minutes and there's this handy little device right here that'll show you when your time is running out. It starts green, goes yellow, and when it turns red, you're done. So.
I will add that everybody in the audience that has his cellphone, would you please turn it to my break?
All right. First is Jim Wisnewski from Silver Lakes regarding the pond standards.
Hey, I did find something yesterday got sent to me that I want to talk to real quick here because this is a memo from Gary Rawlins. I don't know. I've never met him. I don't know who he is.
Gary, right here.
I'm sorry, Gary.
All right.
Gary and.
Well, the, the memo, to me, doesn't make any sense at all because the recommendation on the memo is to have the board go to the Lee County Board of Commissioners to amend ordinance eighty-seven dash fourteen. Eighty-seven dash fourteen was repealed twenty-six years ago. It hasn't been in existence since then, and it never applied to Gateway in the first place because the PUD prevailed over it. So I just wanted to point out when this comes up, this recommendation really doesn't make any sense at all. Now, as for the rest of it, the current standards are working. There's no need to change them at this point. The litoral standards follow all of the pertinent government authorities regarding litoral placement, the DO, the ERP, the PUD. The standards have guardrails around them so that you can't have them removed if it's within ten feet of significant erosion or if there's an ongoing water quality problem. They follow all the governmental requirements while balancing the rights of homeowners to have governmental decisions followed without having to elevate, you know, any kind of a dispute. Now, the ATM report, as I've said before many times, lacks credibility. There's no substance to it. It's just a bunch of unsupported statements. There's no citations, no footnotes, no index of authority, flies in the face of all the legal authorities in Lee County. It's loaded with errors, incorrect assertions, sites that are nonexistent like the one I just pointed out, and it's very poorly researched, poorly written. It was really a stunning lack of due diligence in this. To make mistakes like that is really kind of appalling. The recommendations are really just invalid. I have previously submitted three engineering and scientific studies that held that litoral bands really have no significant impact on water quality whatsoever. I have attached the first and last page of one of them. They came from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. I just gave you the synopsis of that. I want to weigh you down on a lot of paper. This one, I think, is important because of where it came from, Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Also, it cites the other two studies I had presented before in its analysis and reaching its conclusions. So even though this report is just littered with inaccuracies, let's take a look. I want to drill down and take a look how it actually affects ponds in Gateway. And I'm looking at ponds eighty-five and eighty-eight, both in Silver Lakes. They're both going to be remediated and rocked up over the next two, three months. And I wanted to do a little bit of math here and show what this report really says. Once you cut through the thicket and the inconsistencies, what it really says about water quality. Now, the ATM, Lake eighty-five, if you look at it, is seven point six acres, three hundred and thirty-one thousand and fifty-six square feet of surface area control elevation. It has a perimeter of four thousand one hundred and twenty linear feet at control elevation. The ATM report, as you know, on page two dash four, states that thirty percent of the acreage should be covered with litorals. That, in the case of Lake eighty-five, is ninety-nine thousand three hundred and seventeen square feet. Now, let's look at what the Lee County Development Code says now, the Land Development Code, in section ten dash four eighteen.
Just letting you know that a little over a minute left.
You gotta let me finish this.
You get five minutes, like everybody else.
I will ask for dispensation for the next couple of minutes here to finish the math, if you don't mind. The ATM, if we look at section ten dash four eighteen, states the litoral zone should equal twenty-five percent of the pond perimeter at control elevation. In this case, it's a thousand and thirty linear feet. The shelf should be twenty feet wide from control elevation out into the pond. Multiply the two together, you get twenty thousand six hundred square feet. That is six percent of the pond area, not thirty percent, six percent. Now, the ATM report on page five dash two.
Let me just kill this. I was just on a webinar. It's okay. I can stop it for five minutes. Jason, this is a very interesting opportunity that's arisen. And what I'm.
Muted.
Yeah, okay.
I have my time back.
You give me an extra ten seconds.
Thanks. The ATM report states that you get a water quality improvement by the litoral. With thirty percent litorals in there, you can expect to get a ten percent improvement in water quality. That also means ninety percent plus of the pollutant uptake happens in the water column irrespective of any litorals. But if you take a look at it and you take the ATM report level and put it down, do the math and put it down to the level that is required in Lee County, to six percent, not thirty percent, just doing the math, you find it, that'll be a two percent improvement.
We've entertained others, and this is an important nation here.
Thank you.
Try to wrap it. Try to wrap it up.
We don't think of it on this?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we've, interesting.
This is wrapped.
So what's the indication?
Yeah, is, Jim, can you summarize basically? What you're saying is, there's an apples and oranges comparison of the ten-four eighteen and the thirty percent.
Right, right. But if you put it down the same, it's two percent. It's the same as those studies that I submitted. And if you look at Lake eighty-five in particular, it has a TSI of forty-eight. So a two percent improvement on forty-eight, which is excellent water quality to start with, brings it down to forty-seven point oh four. It's pointless. It's just pointless to put.
The basic premise, if I may, is that you disagree with this report. That's your basic.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I respect that.
Absolutely.
But we don't, you know, if we need to, as a board, to get another one, then we'll get another one.
I think you need to get another one.
Okay.
There is zero.
I certainly do, and I appreciate it.
Jim, thank you. Was Rod trying to get in to comment? Was he?
No, he wasn't. Ed, he took another call.
Yeah.
Oh, he was on.
Yeah, yeah, he was on another call.
Okay, we have one more. Jordan in Tiana, Green, regarding a fence and conservation maintenance easement.
Good afternoon. We live in Silver Lakes, and we live on a conservation maintenance easement. And we were trying to get a fence to keep our children contained. And after speaking with a certain contractor, we were told that the county was denying permits. And they directed us back to Gateway Services. And they said that if we can get a letter from Gateway Services saying that it's okay to encroach upon the easement, that they would grant us a permit to put our fence up. There's just been a lot of back and forth, and we just need some clarity on if we can put our fence up before we show out, you know, three hundred dollar application fees, two to three hundred dollars for a survey, paying the county, you know, for a permit, and then they tell us no. Because I get the easement issue, and we're willing to, you know, compromise so that Gateway Services can do whatever they need to do. But we just kind of need a definitive answer before we put out, yes.
How much encroachment are we looking, like, what are you asking for a variance of how many feet?
Well, so if we can get a variance, we would like to go all the way to our property line. But we do understand that.
Without a seam, five feet, ten feet, thirty feet?
We would like to go at least twelve feet into the easement. So that would leave eight feet between the fence that is there and the fence that we want to put up.
Do you have any surveys or anything that we can kind of look at?
I have, I have a survey of our property, but we haven't paid for a survey of the fence because we, that's two to three hundred dollars.
Let me ask this, because I'm somewhat familiar with it. Is, where is this in Silver Lakes? Is this the north end, the middle, or the south end?
It's like the north.
Okay, that's, that's where I was going, as I recall, because it was an issue that came out with Hampton Park years ago. And there is a fence, as I recall, that goes around that corner and borders the back of those first five, six, seven homes in Silver Lakes. Whose property is that fence on? And how did it get there? Yeah, yeah, if you've got something to add to it.
Hi, how are you? I have been communicating with Ms. Green here. I have been, L. Harris Gateway Services. I've been communicating, or I communicated with Ms. Green. I did provide her the instructions to fill out for an encroachment vacation request. We need to have the paperwork filled out, turned into us, just like we did with Mr. Pillsbury. She's asking for fifteen feet into a conservation maintenance easement. We have a maintenance easement behind Silver Lakes where that, it's CA thirty-three, and yes, there is a chain link fence there now.
Well, that was my question. Did the people that put the chain link fence that's there now, did they come in and do this, or did they just, did they get a granted approval to put in a fence?
Southwest, the Water Management District would require WCI to install a chain link fence, the entire perimeter bordering Silver Lakes due to residential encroachment. There was over two acres of encroachment into Conservation Area Thirty-three at that time. WCI was required to put the fence up. The fence is on the conservation easement boundary. We still have the maintenance easement. And like I said, I just, I let Ms. Green know that we need a survey detailing her lot lines, the easement lines, and where the fence will be installed. And we don't require the three hundred dollar payment upfront. That isn't until after it comes to the board and you approve it.
Well, is this fence going to be just in the back of your house, and then it's going to come up the sides of your house to enclose? So the people to your north and south will not have a fence?
They do not. Other neighbors do have a fence.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so no one behind. We're just back up to the conservation. So it won't affect anyone.
Well, my question is, does your two neighbors have conservation easement on their property at the back?
Yes.
I'm trying to get to, is somebody else going to be coming back to us and asking for the same fence when we grant this one's what I'm getting to?
So there's already probably eight houses down that have been, some permitted on that per.
Some what?
Some permitted, some not.
So, and that's, that's our issue. The county, the county permitted some fences, and now they're not anymore.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to understand what, what has been done along that, along that perimeter, and then we need to set a standard that we can, we can agree to any future requests. Like, this is one thing, we, we'll do it here, but I guarantee you, we'll need to either adhere to what, what has already been done, or to plan for additional requests coming down. I think that's where you were going.
The fence you're asking for, the easement that would, would extend the existing chain link fence, twelve feet further into?
No.
No, I'm trying to understand.
Okay, so the, so the chain link fence is, like, it separates the conservation maintenance area in our property. That's going to stay there because it's, it goes from one end of the community to the other.
From that chain link fence to the fence you're proposing, how much of a gap is there?
Yeah, that, so that, that's, that's what we're willing to put it.
Yeah, so our fence, so from our pool gauge to the chain link fence, thirty-five feet total.
Okay.
The easement is twenty feet.
You know what it looks like?
Are you going to go all thirty-five feet, or are you only going to go?
We got too many going. Are we talking about two fences then?
No, we're just talking about.
You're just putting in one fence that's at the back of your property that.
There will be a corridor from that fence, the existing chain link.
So there's.
Where their fence is going to be up.
Cor, yeah.
And I want to know how, like, how high, in case that we need to have the gate, like, you know, otherwise they would have to go around the home to access it. And then they wouldn't have easements on the side of the home.
There are fences in Silver Lakes that go all the way back to that WCI team.
That's what I know, yeah.
Because it's still, it's still our property. It's just.
Can we have staff put this together on an aerial where we can see exactly what we're talking about? Because I'm worried that we have one person that comes in, wants this, somebody else going to come back in and say, well, I want it also.
Well, and to that point, I think staff needs to go out and just do, you know, just some internal surveying. So we need to see along that, along that perimeter, that, on that, well, again, the fencing perimeter that's existing, how many homes are adjacent to that? How many of them already have an existing fence? So we can try to figure out, okay, what do we need to approve here? Because I know we want to approve, make a decision for this homeowner, but I think to your point is, we need, if we're going to set a precedent here, we need to set it and have a standard that we can live up to in, in future requests, but also need to pay attention to what has been done previously.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the easement is still functional.
Yeah, a couple of things. What I would suggest is, is that the property owners submit a request with a sketch and description as to the location of the proposed fence, and put them back on the survey. That's the best way, because if the board's inclined to agree to an easement encroachment agreement, that will then be attached as an exhibit to the agreement. And that gets recorded. And part of the consideration I would also suggest to the board, and we've talked about it sort of indirectly, is the ability of the district to access and utilize that conservation maintenance easement to perform its functions. If you have a line, if all these fences are perpendicular to the existing line that runs behind Silver Lakes and Hampton Park, the district's going to have a heck of a time meandering down.
Well, no, because there's, go ahead.
To then go down and access this.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to see how this fits in with the other.
And to the extent that there are other fences that have not been approved by the district, then we need to address how the board wants to handle that. And as to the extent that our, Lee County's issuing permits, which happened in a lot of counties, and it's happening in Kyler, it sounds like it's happening in Lee. In the past, the building section never paid any attention to easements. And it all came to a head in Kyler County when they were generated, being put inside yard easements and drainage easements and setbacks. And so Kyler County now requires a survey showing all easements and consents from all easement holders. And that sounds like what Lee County's requiring. But obviously, if we have a form, a simple two-page easement agreement, Kyler County used to have a more complicated one. We have more complicated. They've gotten more simpler, and I think a simple, but it's up to the board. But again, I think those are the factors the board needs to take into account.
Like I say, I'd go back. I'd like to see what this looks like. The existing chain link fence, is it encroaching, or is it on the easement line?
It's, it's outside the, it's on the property line.
It's on the conservation.
This is just your property, correct?
Yes, but it's, but there's forty-two houses on that, on that property line. And there is access, just to address this point, there is access actually very close to here to get behind the fence. And, and most of the work in the six years that we've been there has been on the other side of, of the fence, just, just for clarity purposes. But you can get back there. It's just that we live at the other end of where that's at.
Which is everybody's pleasure. I, I think I want to see this.
Something from staff.
See something from staff, and, because I, I don't want to be doing this twice.
Well, something from staff or something from, I think Tony just said, to have the homeowner do the drawings and then have.
Which the board has in the past typically done. We want to see the survey with a, with a description of the proposed improvements and to scale the location of the proposed improvements so that can then, we have an accurate record as to what's allowed.
But I want to see the impact of all forty-two homes.
I think that's a great idea. Because again.
I don't want to do it once.
There might be access at one point, but if you need, the reason why it's twenty feet, we all know, is in case we need to get heavy equipment in there at some point in time. And if you have a series of fences without gates.
You're going to need a helicopter to get in there.
Well, and that, and that's why, that's why we were willing to compromise in, in leaving some feet. Twenty feet is a lot into, into, I get it, that it's an easement, but into your property when it's only thirty-five feet to the fence anyway. That's fifteen feet that we have.
Do you understand what we're asking for staff to do?
Yes. Okay, so just so that I'm clear, like, are, we're supposed to then hire a survey company and don't?
Don't do anything. Don't do anything till we see what comes back.
Okay. And then how?
This might be real simple.
Okay. And will we be notified of that, or?
At the next meeting.
Our, our next meeting is February third, so we come to that meeting to.
We'd like to have a presentation from staff at that meeting so we can make a decision.
What I would suggest is if Laura or Gary volunteer you to send them the agenda packet and that where they go with the agenda item, so they can see all the materials.
Yeah.
That way they can see all the materials in advance.
Get it from Al if you've been communicating with her. Okay.
Yeah, that way they can see all the materials in advance, so they know.
She has that.
Yeah, Al did a great job on the phone.
No, I mean, he's talking about the, what our findings, what we're going to present at the meeting next time.
Yeah, she, she, it was very, there's not anything, she was very clear. She was very nice. But I just want to make sure before we show out, you know, hundreds of dollars, and then it's like, no.
You don't do anything till we have that February meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't by any chance have any other neighbors waiting in the wings to come in to do it, do you? Should be nice to know if this is.
Yes.
We don't know what you're planning, but when we had, we found out about this, one of the companies that were kind of hired, they let us know about the issue. So there's already, and then when we went to our HOA, we had HOA approval, they said that there had argued in three fences that they had approvals. And then they went to the county, were denied by the county. Now, they kind of left it as is. You know, we have a little bit more motivation to try and get it done.
I guess, yeah.
Got you. Got you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But just as an example, also, Al, you can give them a copy of the Perma Criteria Manual because in there, there's a section two dash two, page two dash two, that says, request for easement, vacation, modification, or encroachment. And so currently, we have a current process in place for this.
Yeah, I want to see what our options are on this when it comes in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, anybody else?
There are no other comments.
Nobody.
No one else, no one online. I asked, and Rod did apologize for his interruption. He thought he was on mute. So, no, there are no, no one else registered to, signed up to give public comment.
Okay, do. Moving right on. Staff reports not ahead, eight minutes, so keep that in mind. Staff reports. I'm not going to get wiggled into the end of this.
So we're not waving the filibuster? The, the first item is, a couple, a couple items. One is, I think you all received the memorandum with regards to recommendation or request for authorization to file a complaint lawsuit against Ford Line. We articulated the reasons in there. We've articulated and listed the initial budget. The, we didn't outline any numbers associated with estimated cost for the balance. That's something that we could discuss in a closed-door session, but it can only occur once a litigation is filed. And there's two points with regards to filing the litigation. The statute limitations is told for a period of ninety days after we serve them with the five fifty-eight demand letter, and that's a copy of the second letter, which was, it wasn't the demand letter, but it was, hey, you know, we sent you this early and you didn't respond. So seventy days has passed as of today. And then the board, because it's pending litigation, we can have closed-door sessions appropriately called to discuss it.
Take the action.
Correct. Right now, under Florida law, you cannot have a closed-door session. And I do not want to discuss this, all the strategy.
And so at this point in time, what you're doing is on advice of, or recommendation of staff, recommending that we go ahead with what we would call the initial pleadings of filing.
Yeah, filing the complaint and.
And, and then once we hear back from that, that's going to determine the scope?
No. Once we file that complaint, it's now pending litigation, we will then request the board to have a closed-door session, you know, to discuss, as outlined, strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures or settlement negotiations.
Everybody read this? We've got to watch, you know, what we say on this, I guess. Did anybody have any questions on the proposed recommendation of staff to, to take this action?
Nope.
Is there a motion to take the action?
I will make a motion. We take the action.
Second?
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Bill or Doug, any question in this?
No.
I have, I have one, Chairman.
Yeah, Bill.
As I have reviewed the actions that led up to this, I, I believe that there are more than enough actors to have, have some, have some liability in this, and not the least of which is our own engineer. I can remember our own engineer standing at the podium.
Yeah, Bill, Bill's, I think Tony's going to tell us we're walking on thin ice, talking about that at this point in time.
I would suggest that those discussions could be held as part of the closed-door session.
Yeah, I, I think so, too.
We don't, we don't disagree.
We don't disagree, Bill, with what you're saying. I just, we're, we're in a precarious position of playing our cards in the public here. Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of taking the appropriate action to file a lawsuit against Florida Law, say aye.
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 Aye. Five of.
Thank you very much. Next is, I think I sent this memo out to all the board members. The board had discussed at the last meeting, the consideration of setting up an interview panel of staff with regard to the district manager, employee, candidates. I sent out a memorandum. It's very, if the board wishes to do that, the constraints are mighty on that. It can just be a fact-finding. There can be no recommendations. There cannot be any rankings. There can't be any sense of the group to the board as to what that group recommends. And I think y'all had, it's a one-page memorandum. So the board wishes to proceed, they, to convene or create a staff panel for interviewing management candidates. These are the constraints. And then talk, if the board services that panel, I will then talk with the panel and again advise them all of these constraints and the very limited activity they can engage in.
Tony, where is this document?
Oh, I thought you mailed it. We got it a couple weeks ago.
Tony, I think the alternative here is potentially, once we get to, let's say, final selection phase, or, you know, somewhere in there regard, we would just do probably just individual interviews with each, each of the board members, which I think would be expected. The idea was to maybe try to streamline this a little bit, but if we have to jump through so many hoops and there's so many things to look at, I think the best thing to do, we will have, you know, five board members, probably thirty minutes apiece, thirty to forty-five minutes, and we'll just have to bake that into the process.
And again, this was, you know, the board wanted some guidance on this, and there's the guidance that the board wishes to proceed. If they don't, then that's the board's prerogative.
So in essence, what's this doing is making it a complicated process to do it in the manner in which we have someone elected to do.
What we were trying to do was kind of filter a little, throw out the crabs if we're looking for ducks. This doesn't allow that.
If you, if you can do that, with every one of those interviews, we then have to be involved. And the panel defeated the whole purpose.
And I don't know if Laura was going to cover this during her update, but just while we're on, on the topic. So Laura has, has withdrawn her candidacy for the district manager. So she and I, we're supposed to touch base this week, but due to me being sick, I've had to delay it. So we'll try to touch base tomorrow. But inserting her into the process, the selection process, which, which should be advantageous. So I'll have her send something out once she and I touch base on the revised process with, with Tony's memo coming through. We'll, I'll have Laura work with Gary, maybe as early as tomorrow or first thing Monday, on a revision to what our process is going to look like.
And then you're, with that on the agenda for the February fifth meeting then, for?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, Ed, I hope to have it, you know, we've got a couple candidates that we, that we're starting the process with. We can review it then, just to confirm that it's working well. But I'd like to go ahead and get the, get them in process, you know, so I don't want to wait for the, the next board meeting, because we can already have some of these initial interviews taking place, which Gary has started, you know, has done some screening well, so.
Can we do, can we do that? Do a consent to agree to that prior to the meeting?
Well, I was looking at another, I'm sorry, but the suggestion is?
Well, I was suggesting that we take and wait till the meeting, the fifth, to look at the document they're preparing to agree to that format. What Doug is saying is they'd like to expedite it. Can we go? What Doug is saying is they'd like to expedite it. Can we go ahead and do it without having?
I, I'd like to have the board look at it.
Well then, can, if we, the board can look at it, can we email, uh? I knew you were going there.
Well, well, yeah, uh, I gotta, I gotta, I think about it. I think what I just understood. If Laura is now possible candidate, then she ought to be hands-off to anything related.
She previously was. So she had previously, out of the, we had three candidates that, uh.
Been missed.
What, what Doug is, I think, saying is, is that if he and Laura and Gary come up with a format, can they go on ahead and start to implement the format without having?
Absolutely, but I thought that she was one of the candidates and that, that was a problem.
That would first of all.
Okay. Critically for the format, uh, if they wish to, but.
No action taken.
Or recommendation.
No recommendation, no ranking, no anything. No, I get, okay, I'm trying to, it's the format for the interviewing process or format for the? Any and all.
They want to, they want to go on ahead and proceed, as I understand, go on ahead and proceed with the interviewing and other things under the format that they come up with. And my deal is, is that I don't see a problem with that as long as no action is taken until we.
What, but, but if, if the purpose of the interviews is to make recommendations to this board?
Yes.
Then it becomes an issue.
Yeah, okay, so let me, let me just outline the process really quick, um, at least on a high level. There's basically three, let's call it three tiers. The first tier is part of the vetting process. Um, Gary and, uh, and Premier is helping with some of that initial vetting. I'll be, I'll be a part of that as well. The second phase is what I'm calling staff, uh, staff review. So we'll have, you know, those individuals that are candidates, uh, interview with staff, which more than likely would probably be Kenny and Laura. And then the third piece would be final consideration, or at least, you know, the third phase, which would be, you know, really getting the board involved. And that's as we're getting down to, you know, kind of final selections. Um, but the board absolutely needs to have line of sight, needs to have input. Um, they will also be able to have transparency in, uh, in resumes that are coming through. So the first time that they're looking at candidates won't be at the final interview. It will be, you know, upfront, but knowing that will be a vetting, a vetting, uh, phase one. There'll be a staff review phase two, uh, and then the board will start really getting inserted hands-on through their individual, um, uh, as part of phase three.
Okay, Tony, let me see if I can get an idea to way me get around what you're, where you're coming from. Is if Doug works with Gary and Laura to create the, the process, can Gary and Laura and staff go on ahead on their own to start the process such that no board members are involved in that, which would cause a problem that you're worried about?
The problem isn't the board member. The problem is you're delegating, you know, I'll call it part of the fact-finding process to an advisory group if they're making recommendations. That's where it all comes out. That's why.
And how do you get around that? You have, you have to approve the system.
It's not getting around. The courts always say avoid all invasive devices. So I always get nervous.
But, but, but anyway, man, what, what, my question quickly, if the staff review is to equally present what the job is so that the people that are trying to get the job understand what the functions are. It should be harm, no harm, no foul. That's just an informational.
If it's informational, and if the staff person is then not making a recommendation to the board.
Correct. So that, that's how I view what Doug was saying. First, we set up, you know, the, the kind of vetting process, that if a guy's applying for dog catcher, well, he's.
Well, Doug, what I was getting was tainting it from Tony's perspective was is that Doug was involved in that first process.
No, even if you're not involved, the issue is if you set up a staff interview panel.
As long as they're not making a ranking and an order or a recommendation.
Recommendation, no findings.
We're okay with staff talking to these people.
That's called, that, that's interviewing and doing fact-finding.
So they know what they're getting into.
I talked to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith, uh, said that he went to such and such a school. We checked us into such a school. They have no record of his transcript.
So, so then, so then could, I guess, can you guys come up with a process that would do what we're saying that is not going to taint it by a recommendation?
So let me, let me ask the question a little differently, um, because the, when you were talking about panels, I want to make sure that we're, we're very clear on, on the environment. So if, if you're talking about pan, group, panel interviews and panel, you know, um, using, using those panels for recommendations, if we take the panels out, what can we do, Tony, as far as interviewing, assessing, and identifying candidates through the process? Because you, you start with multiple candidates and then you whittle that down to final selection. Within, with what you've been able to determine, how do you do that with staff? Um, and even the board to get the final selection? How does that input, how is that input shared on recommendations and even ranking it, if so be it?
It would be very difficult, because then we would be looking at somebody that somebody recommended to do a, uh, a cutting.
I, I guess, just to help me, because again, I've looked at it, a very narrow question, and that's where we came back, looking at a very narrow question. If the board outlined today what they want to have happen, I mean, again, the concept was, do you have an interview panel by the staff? And what do they do? If you want to have that, here's, here's how they can do it.
Take, take the panel out of the equation. So I think the panel, panel is what's causing us issues. If we, so let's say phase one is a, is premier, uh, initial vetting. Phase two is staff interviews, and we can do those independently. And really, that would probably be, you know, uh, an interview with, with Laura, Kenny, uh, and we may insert, you know, someone from Premier if they're not doing formal interviews as part of the vetting process. Uh, and then the final phase, based on recommendations of staff. So if we've got five candidates, when they get through vetting and staff interviews, we should have a short list of, let's say, three that gets in front of the board interviews, and then we all get together, make a recommendation, board recommendation, staff recommendation, and that's how we get to either a final two or a final one.
What, what I would suggest, because I, to bail, to provide me with the framework that you all want to work with, then I can do the research and say, here's what you can do. If the concept is that you have three individual staff members that individually will interview, and then each of those individuals will individually make the recommendation, i- is that the framework?
I mean, if you're saying that that's, that's simpler than trying to structure a panel.
I, no, I'm, I'm not saying that is, would be kosher.
Okay, here's what I'll do. Let me put together, I'll put together two options for you. And I'll have that early next week. You'll have two options. One will include, you know, the concept of panels at various levels. Um, the other will be straight individual interviews. What I'm trying to get away from is if, if we go individual interviewers, you're gonna have five, six, seven, eight, a minimum of eight interviews before getting to final selection. That can be very cumbersome from a scheduling perspective and from a candidate experience.
Just don't see how you get around it.
It may not be, it may not be that big of a deal in a government environment, because you normally have to jump through these hoops. But, you know, in, in today's competitive market, eight, you know, eight-level interviews, maybe even upwards of ten, depending on, uh, if we add, you know, Kyle into that mix or, or Scott, uh, which I think would, you know, would probably be pertinent. Um, then you're, you're span, you're, you're really convoluted the process, but we can do it.
What I'm thinking is, Doug, if you, if, uh, Doug, if you and I can, can have a call on Monday, we can have this conversation and talk about what y'all, what you want, and we can then look at the, try to, while we're even on the phone, have some of that research, because there's some re, great resources out there for that. But again, there's some, when you start changing the very, the facts just a little bit, it starts to push it over into the sunshine.
Yeah, I understand. So I, why don't you include Gary and Laura on that meeting? And then so us four can get together, I'll have a draft of an outline of the, of two options. Uh, and one thing I'll say is, you know, one of the things that I would drive in this process is repeatability. So we'd ask the same questions, we would treat every candidate exactly the same, so that the process is, is repeatable, and we're evaluating based on the same criteria over and over again.
But are, are we saying though that when we do meet as a board, we're meeting individually?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, um, yeah.
No, you can't, you can't have individual conversations. I mean, that's.
But I mean, why, why, I'm trying to figure out, why just can't we all be at the same table with the candidate?
You can, but the public will be there at the same time.
That's what you're trying to avoid.
Oh, you're not trying to avoid? That's the sunshine.
That's the, I've got it.
Yeah.
In English, that's the way you get around it.
Could it be a workshop?
No.
No, I mean, honestly, you don't want that to happen. You, you want, you want your interviews with the candidate. Now, we might bring them back for final selection and have them present in front of the board, that's fine. But I think you're gonna want, and the candidate's gonna want, to have very direct conversations outside of the sun through this process.
What you just, it, it, to rephrase that, it can be individual conversation with individual board members, and then you don't have a sunshine lounge.
Correct. Yeah.
When you, when you're doing that, when you're doing that, the problem you get into is just that I've asked the candidate something, that I know something about it that you don't know. How do we get that back out on?
It's fine, you know, that's okay. I mean, in my opinion, if, if I was interviewing for a, you know, or for a, a role like this in my day-to-day, I would expect my different leaders to ask different questions and bring different insight. Um, now, we don't want to throw curveballs and, and, you know, we'll, we'll probably have some guidance on, you know, from the board, what questions we should recommend that we ask and what we should recommend we stay away from, you know? But I think it's fine. If, Ed, if you dive into engineering and maybe, you know, pawns and, and, you know, different stuff like that, that's fine. You know, I might, I might approach it a little differently, and I think that's what will, that will help us get to the finish line in a selection that we're all comfortable with.
I was just trying to figure out how we share what we learned.
Well, how about this?
Well, yeah, yeah, and we can do that. So we can funnel all of our feedback through Gary and Laura, and they can, we, they can provide an executive memo on each candidate.
Uh, what I, that is that we have the call on Monday, that we put together a memo about the procedure, it starts sort of outlining it, and that we, and we look at it and we advise, yes, you can do this, or no, you can't, or who you can't do. I like to try to say what you can do, quite frankly. I mean, I know I come across as a.
It's very frustrating, five months into this process, and we're still at square one.
Yeah, if, if you, if you have a staff, be it Gary or Laura, either one, setting in with the individual board members, asking the individual questions, then you've got some consistency of what, what happened, so that it can be.
Well, what, what I would do, Ed, is, is probably, I'd probably work with staff on just a, you know, just a, um, a one-pager, um, that has some, some, uh, some, and Tony, I think we can do this, where we're just rating them on certain skills, um, and how you get to that skill set, um, you know, we can talk through.
Well, I, I think it'd be helpful to have that column before us on Monday.
Yeah, okay, let's do that, and we'll table this for conversation after that. And we, if, if we need to, we can have Tony send something out to the full board with an update of that meeting. So we don't have to wait till the next meeting to, you know, to, to get insight to the board.
Yeah, Doug, if you, uh, if you can send me your availability for next Monday.
That'd be great. Everybody agree with that going that route?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it. Okay, let's do that. Doug, you get, uh, I take it with Laura and Gary, put your stuff together, get it to Tony, and then we.
We'll have the call on Monday, and then we'll do a memo.
You'll, you'll disseminate that information.
Yeah.
Twenty, so like a commercial. How many people are we talking about that are in the process right now? Three, four, two?
We have, uh, six candidates.
Six now.
That I'm vetting.
Okay.
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 Uh, one, I don't.
That's good news.
Yeah. Uh, as a follow-up to the last, the board meeting in December, and, uh, reminders from Al and Laura to get this done, I've added language with regards to force majeure to our, the one contract we have. To be honest, the maintenance and also the, uh, concept, I think Doug mentioned about defective or incomplete work or work not performed according to schedule as part of the ability for the district to hold back money or to correct the work and, uh, again, deduct different monies out, but also putting a force majeure clause in it, just for, I'll call it equity perspective. So that we, that should be signed today, and I appreciate Laura.
On the table.
And Al's patience with regards to that.
This is a force majeure.
Yes, I've got one if you want to see it. I've got it, uh.
I can email it to you if you want to see it.
I have it right here. I have extra copies. Um, working through the hundreds of pages of the documents that are the exceptions in the plausible title commitments, I want to get that spread away. But what happens when you, when you issue a title commitment, the document issued, they list exceptions to the coverage that would be provided, showing that the property is marketable or free and clear from all encumbrances. And I've culled through a bunch, and Steve Adam's office was great in providing me with, uh, a Dropbox or Sharebox of all those hundreds of pages. I'm just working my way through there, so I want to wrap it up and have that in the next board meeting, to get that conveyance before the board. Uh, with regards to the City of Fort Myers DRI Public Council Amendment, we scheduled for city council January 31st at 5:15 PM. Uh, they were having a meeting with a council member from Ward 6 this Friday at four o'clock to discuss with her the preferred language from the district and PPCA.
How, how did that preferred language that we approved last time, did that?
Make it to the staff.
Make it?
Yeah, uh, I don't think it's gonna make it to the staff. That's why we're talking with the council member. Uh, and, and, because the staff at the city still has issues and they still are living in the past. That's my humble opinion. I'll stop there.
I would agree.
It may, it may be from the standpoint at the city council hearing on the 31st, and this is a PPCA issue. They may want to have lots of folks in green show up or something.
None of us were here. Who, who, who's got them irate?
No, it's, it's called long-term memory by staff people.
Last time this came to you.
Yeah, so anyways, it was, like I said.
We're here, that's why.
Like I said, the Zoom call was interesting when, and then the city council hearing, I mean, the planning board was even more interesting. Uh, with regards to that, uh, that's, I have for now, unless there are any other questions from the board.
Yeah, in, in the, uh, packet, there was this chapter 2020.
Oh, that's, yeah, Laura. That's me.
Oh, that's you?
That's me.
What, what is?
I'll, I'll explain that to you.
Oh, okay.
This is the whole chapter, and the only, the pertinent portion of that chapter is at agenda page nine. Towards the, uh, excuse me, agenda page nine.
This is in relative, this is relative to what?
Uh, to whether or not a full agenda packet needs to be delivered or posted a week in advance.
Over the board meeting.
The legislature in American wisdom had earlier, a couple years back, said we need to have all these requirements on special districts to provide greater opportunities for public participation. And one of them that was added, it's that number 15, that's the second last part at the bottom. You know, at least seven days before each meeting or workshop, the agenda of the, of the event, along with any meeting materials available in electronic format, uh, had to be available and posted on the website. But the legislature in 2020, uh, said, hey, I guess they got some pushback. You, you don't need to have all the materials available on the website. That became sort of a difficult task for staff to have it all available seven days in advance. So this was just a discussion Laura wanted to have on her part about whether the board wants to have the agenda posted, they, excuse me, agenda backup material posted seven days in advance. Is that correct, Laura?
Yeah, we don't actually post it, but distributed.
Distributed.
Yes.
So.
Or posted, too.
So in English, does this make it simpler for you?
Oh, gosh, yes. Uh, the reason that we're requesting this is because like today we have our board meeting, our materials, the, the backup for the agenda air due Monday. That gives us no time to follow up on anything that you direct us here, which.
Including your engineer and attorney, really.
Right.
Because what happens is, next day's a Friday, a lot of times meetings, and weekend and Monday, boom. It's.
So, so this change or amendment or revision, uh, facilitates what we're wanting to do to, we, we buy time.
Yeah, so what we're, what we're asking for and what would not change is you still will get the agenda seven days ahead of time, because we can, we can get to Georgia and Maryland what we want to present at the board meeting as far as a topic.
And you still have to have that on the agenda.
Yes, that has to be, that has to be put out seven days ahead of time and posted on the website, seven days before the meeting. So that's not a problem. We don't have a problem with that. It's the materials that go with the agenda topics that we're having a hard time getting together.
Did, did, uh, anybody, uh, have, uh, any questions for Tony, uh, anything else?
Any reason why the other stuff is underlined?
That's the legislature. The way they do that, so additions are underli, I know, you're going, are they directed towards me? No, additions are underlined, deletions are structured. That's why.
Those are important things. Again, I use highlighter.
Yeah, I know. I, when you see the governance section, you go, wait a minute, is there something we did or did not do? No, that's just, that just shows how it was meant.
Nothing else for, uh, uh, Tony, uh, is Stephen on, on board?
Hey, Ed, uh, good afternoon. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, yes.
All right, first up is, uh, Lake 93 and Daniel's Preserve. Uh, they're wrapping that up. Today they were installing laterals for the change order area. Um, so if you get a chance, go stop by. The lake looks really, really good. Um, that should be done. All the punchless items should be done in the next week. And, uh, we have a pre-bid meeting on Monday for the next round of lakes at 10 AM at the Gateway Office. Um, we also have the ongoing issue in Casella, which I believe staff, uh, brought up to the board last week, or last meeting, rather. Um, today we heard back from Lennar and RWA. They're gonna have RWA go out and, uh, field survey and stake the area that's in concern. Um, again, this is at the south end of Casella. This is for the weird number three access drive. Um, so I guess first step is for them to survey it and actually get a, a real-world idea of what is wrong and where it is wrong.
Now, I looked at that. And somebody royally bust that survey?
Um, I don't know. I mean, I, I have a feeling they put a berm in the wrong spot. Like on their construction plans, there's not supposed to be a berm, and when they constructed the home. And when they constructed the home during final grading, they put a berm there. So I think that kind of messed everything up.
Do you see that Bob, in that drawing? Okay. Okay. Any action, the action we need to take on that?
I think right now we're just kind of waiting for more information to come in. I think it's a good idea that we get an actual survey. We were using the corner of the building as a point of reference, but that's assuming they put the building in the right spot.
All right, there you go. That might not be a good idea.
Shades of a building being built over.
Over top of the sewer.
Forty-two inch pipe.
Yes, I remember that. Go ahead, uh, Stephen.
That's it for me.
Anybody have anything else for Stephen or is, uh, anything that he's, uh, that yet to come? Well, we need him on?
I think there's an item that Scott may have, um, relating to aeration in the lakes. I'll, I'll stay tuned.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Scott?
Okay, thank you.
Leaving Tetra Tech on for that aeration. Okay, good.
Yeah, I did have one question. Stephen, how's that, the survey of the lighting coming for the corner of Cypress Grove and Pelican Reserve Boulevard?
Uh, we have our electrical engineer. He's scheduled to come down within the next two weeks. I'll get with you on a, an exact date if you want to meet him out there and talk to him.
Yeah, I'd very much like to do that.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to have Stephen stay on for item 4C, the matter read upon release, just so we can get his affirmation on the record.
Okay.
Certain matters. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Stephen.
Okeydoke.
Don't worry.
Next, uh, Gary.
I just update on the vetting process. Uh, we are making progress on that. Monday we'll get together and outline the rest of the, uh, how to proceed.
Anybody have anything, Gary?
The dip in the road is taken care of.
I saw that.
Yeah.
And it hasn't, at least my, uh, driving over it, it hasn't, uh, resumed dipping. Seems, see, did anybody find out what it was? What, what?
I don't. You don't, Scott, did we hear anything back as to what they found? I wasn't told anything. I just knew they fixed it.
I don't hear anything. Yeah, I was not involved.
It must not have been anything that would have led them to concern that there was a rat hole down to the pipe. So, good news. Good, 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 good. Uh, Laura?
Okay, uh, a few updates. Um, the, my item B on here, I'm going to ask, we can push that to the February 3rd meeting. Uh, we've had a flurry of meetings over the last week, and the documents are not ready yet. There were some last minute changes. So, um, we worked with Iberia slash First Horizon, and, uh, we will have everything ready for the February 3rd meeting. They are good with that. Uh, no change to rates or anything like that if we push it out to the third. Um, I handed out something to you guys where I had gotten an email from, uh, David Wagley looking for, uh, support to install a sidewalk on Daniels Parkway and, or on Gateway. I put it on your, it should be at your place. I just, I handed it out. Um, I think I emailed it to the board too, but I didn't hear back from anybody. And Doug and Mr. Guy, you should have it in your email. It looks like.
I don't have it.
There was one over there, but when it had all the chairs. I only have the.
That earlier, Laura?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you sent earlier?
It is, yes.
Yeah, okay, I got it. Thanks.
Can you pass this one down to Fabi and then she doesn't have it?
Where are they wanting to put a sidewalk?
Uh, the map is on the third page. And it wouldn't cost us anything. They actually have a grant to put it in, so it wouldn't cost us anything. They're just looking for letters of support to have it done. It would be joining two existing sidewalks.
So this, these red made connections to existing sidewalks?
I lost my map, but, uh, yes.
The two sections.
Yep.
So this, this really facilitates the Worthington, uh, deal in it and Scott. It's almost right across the face of the Worthington.
I haven't seen.
It goes all the way from where Commerce Lakes Parkway goes over to Daniels. Basically, it initiates right there and then goes up Daniels toward, uh, Lehigh Acres. It almost goes, almost goes up to the FPL Eastman.
So I, I don't see any issues with it, but I did not feel that it was within my authority to, to say yes, well, go ahead and support it. So I wanted to bring it to the board. I am more than happy to put, to use the format they have for the letter and ensure support if you're okay with it.
Have is I would want to make sure that when you start talking about sidewalks, uh, especially as it impacts us in that area where we have a property that it doesn't create any drainage issue for our developer that could have changed his drainage, uh, concept.
Okay.
Scott, you might want to just take a look at that, make sure that we don't have an issue. I can't picture it because we're talking about all his water going the opposite direction. In fact, it might be beneficial if it'll keep the water coming from the airport over to.
Yeah.
Might be a dam. Okay.
So is, do I have approval or not? Or do you want us to check? You know, you want me to circle back at the next meeting or?
I'd just like to have Scott just give a, take a look at it, a cursory look to say that we don't have any, any issue with it. Right now, at this point in time, I don't see anything that would jump out and see that that would be wrong with it.
Okay. Um, we talked about the board book delivery, so I guess what, um, what I would, what I'm requesting, and, um, I know everybody has access to the link and I can resend it out, uh, is that we use that shared folder, and we can keep all the documents updated. So if there are changes to anything prior to the board meeting, whenever you go in there, you'll have the most current version of whatever we're going to be presenting at the board meeting. Um, and we can, what I would propose then, and Doug and I had talked about this as well, is that, um, if the board wants to set a, a deadline, like if the board meeting is on Thursday, no change made to anything in there after like Wednesday at noon or whatever day you're going to go in and look at them. I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. That gives us a lot more time to be able to provide better, more up-to-date documents for you guys for the board meetings than if we have like one day to put it all together.
Yeah. And so the, the idea here is to sort of streamline, um, you know, the amount of materials that gets handed out, be able to keep the board as up-to-date as possible, give us the ability to have more supplementals in a centralized place. And what I would recommend is we do, you know, once we kind of figure out this strategy, we would have a workshop with the board and literally have a hands-on, whether we can do it at a workshop or we can do it individually with, uh, a member of staff, maybe even bringing our, our tech, technology partner in, and walk everyone through how to set up their devices or how to, you know, access the SharePoint site, whatever. So everyone is clearly trained on how to get to this information. Um, I think it'll help us streamline information and actually give us more information, um, in real-time environment.
And I'm happy to make home visits to help people get connected, whatever. If you want to bring it here, I'm, I'm more than happy to work with everybody to help you get, figure out how to get to it.
Now, this doesn't create any problem with us on any, uh, citizen access or anything like that?
The, they can always make a public records request.
Yep.
If they wish to, uh, for anything. So if you add anything to the agenda.
That was why I was requesting a cutoff date because then we would know that if someone makes a public records request, we can tell them that the book, the board materials will be finalized as of whatever day and time, and we'll send it to them at then.
I think it's a good way to do that, too. Yeah.
Well, I was trying to work, or I was worried about the fact that they would come back and say, uh, something is, was coming up to the meeting that I didn't have knowledge of. That's why I didn't come.
Yeah, the key aspect.
That will not be the case. So we will still adhere to, yeah, we'll, we'll still adhere to, um, you know, the, the standards that we have. However, the difference between, you know, submitting a, a 20 meg PDF every week, when sometimes that information is updated, um, that's what we're going to try to streamline. So the agenda, agenda items will be there, probably some supplementals, but we're just not going to, like if Tony submits something, we don't need to have all of that in the agenda package. We can have it, you know, at least in the PDF.
Yeah. Local governments do when you have a large item, they will have a link, uh, to those documents too. So you don't have to have all 500 pages.
Yeah.
And then go to the link. You go to the agenda, then you link to the 500 pages, which is a separate.
So the, so the baiting is that this just looks like an easy meeting. It's all hidden on the, on the attachments.
Yeah. And I will tell you that, look, this, this will take a couple of iterations for us to get really comfortable with how, where we're putting the information, how we're referencing it. So I like that. I like Tony's idea of the, you know, having an embedded link for the board members. Um, and I think what we'd need to do too is just evaluate what, what your primary device is that you use to access inform, this information. If you, if you're using a laptop, we'll set it up there. If you drive off an iPad, we can, we can set up there. So it should be pretty simple to direct to, to this site. But it may take us a couple of iterations to really get comfortable with it. So I would just ask the board, the board, staff and vendors, our patients, as we try to improve this environment on how we, you know, share information and how we prepare for these board meetings.
Yeah, I think the key aspect is the agenda. Then if there's any amendments to be amended, agenda posted, which is not unusual. That's.
Correct.
Laura can prepare the tutorials for me and Gapper.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will come to your house and show you how to do it.
Yeah. And, and again, I don't, I, I don't know the level of the district's website and not volunteering Gary or Laura, but a lot of other local governments, you'll see they'll have a simple, like two or three page agenda. And they'll have the item, and you click on all the documents. There's all links, so.
I can see.
And the documents are still available over here to be printed if we need them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the way that we do it internally right now is I actually have, uh, my, my other screen over here has the folder with all of the materials that are on the agenda, and they're labeled like it's, uh, 3C1, 3C2. So each of the files, you'll know exactly what it is. That's, that's the way that we're already naming all the files. So everything will match right up.
The manual, it's much easier for the printed copy for me than the electronic copy.
Right, we're trying.
I think what will make it easier, Bob, is if we, we adopt what Tony's saying, is you put a link in there. So literally, you've got your agenda, you click on item 3B, and it directs you to the document that opens up. So we'll clear it out a little bit. I, I don't, I don't want to say we've got a finished product yet. We don't. We just want to get the board to accept this in theory and, and in principle, for them to start shifting to this. It won't be, it won't happen overnight. You know, we need to get things set up and make sure that we do some dry runs. So it, it's very easy to use because we don't want to get to a board meeting and it, and it, and it not be, you know, well thought through. So we're going to go through some trial runs, so.
The problem that I personally have is when I go through multi-page documents electronically, and I have thoughts and comments and things, I have a difficult time keeping them in a logical order. So when we go and review it electronically, I'm there. When I do.
Well, there's, there's nothing to say that we can't continue to print out, you know, some of these documents, you know, um, with the board.
I'm in the same boat, you are. I need a.
Okay, so it sounds, it sounds like we will have to go through a couple of, of red pages.
Yeah.
I'll work with some different options and formats and, and work with you guys on that.
It's just difficult.
It'll just make things.
What paragraph of a, of a three or four page thing where I had a problem, where's a highlighter? I just highlight.
It just makes it a lot easier for staff and for Tony and for the engineer to get our materials together because if we, like I said, if they're due Monday, I have no time to work on it.
Give it a dry run.
So, okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll ease it in. We'll phase it in. Um, just a couple, oh, do you have something, Tony, or?
No, just, I just found that, I understand, I, I print everything out too, by the way.
I know you.
But what I found is when I go to some, some, some government websites and you go to the agenda, you click on it, you can read it and go, I, I don't want it printed. And that's, that's the beauty of the links, the embedded. That's the beauty of having the links only. Sometimes I go, ooh, I want the whole thing. And it's a lot easier when you have individual items that you can click.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Sounds like the three of us are going to be in class together. Who's ready to popcorn?
I really like. I'll be in class, but I can do both.
It's like a security blanket.
Laura, anything else?
I have a few more, yes, sorry. Um, the license plate readers, uh, they should be getting, my last update is they should be getting installed today and tomorrow. Uh, I actually have a training tomorrow morning with Flock to, uh, get our, our, um, account set up for access and get the admin set up and all that with it. And I did want to clarify because I don't know if there was maybe I misspoke or misstated the way that this is. This, um, they're actually taking images of the license plate. It is not a video stream, but they are being transmitted in real time. So it's like picture, send it, picture, send it, picture.
How long does it stay?
Uh, that I'll find out, I'll know more tomorrow. I don't, I may, I, I don't know what their intention is. I have, I have several questions.
Something that came up a little differently in the P-PAC meeting and Laura clarified it.
Yes.
Cause I knew it was real time.
It, it is real time, but it's not a stream. They're, they're photographs that are sent in real time.
Yeah, and you need to have access to them maybe two, three, four weeks later.
You got it.
Oh, I would assume it's years that they keep them, but I'll find out for sure. But I have my training tomorrow for that. Um, I do have a couple of quick things. There was a request this week from, um, Rashad Briscoe, who is a soccer coach with Gateway Charter High School. He wants to know if they can use the field, one field, once a week on Saturday, on Wednesday nights from 7:00 to 9:30. Um, it's an 18-plus adult male football team, about 50 players, and they want to do practice over there. Um, they're looking to start, uh, their, their season runs from February 26th to May 14th, so they would like to start practices as soon as possible so that they're ready. Uh, Georgia did mock up an invoice based on estimated hours that they would be on the field for field usage and lights. It would bring in about, uh, a little over $3,300 or $30, $3,700, sorry.
Is this conflict with any of the other commitments?
That field is open.
And it's consistent pricing with everything else?
They're getting charged the same as everyone else. Yeah. I think the only, the only concern is I know that, um, you, the board had expressed concern in the past with adults being on the field. Um, because these are, these are grown men playing football on the soccer fields. So. What has?
Wait, 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 playing soccer or football?
Football.
No.
American football.
No. I, 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 that is just way more wear and tear, I think.
So I don't, is American football?
Like, like the Green Bay Packers. Yes.
So it's. And, and I'm.
I'm a cheese head, sorry.
Are they wearing spikes?
I would assume so, yeah. I'm full of bull in practice. We didn't want to tell.
The problem with this is, here's, here's my input on it. The, the problem with it, in, in soccer, they're dispersed, and you're getting kind of equal wear and tear on the field, you know, in different areas. Football, they're going to be lining up, and it's, it just, it kills the grass more so than it does with soccer. I mean, I was even reluctant to have the adult league come in. Um, but it seems like they've been really good tenants to this point, and we haven't noticed any additional wear and tear. I, I just have a problem. These are not football fields.
Most of the damage is going to occur between the stripes and.
Exactly, yeah. You're going to get a tremendous amount of wear and tear, um, in, in, in that field with that type of usage. I'd love to have them, but to be quite honest, I just don't think our fields can support it.
Okay, we'll let them know.
Is that, is everybody, I agree with that. Consent with that?
Okay. That was kind of what staff felt, but we didn't think we should make the decision. Um, uh, there was one more. I don't know what happened to it. There was a lady, I think I sent it to Tim too. Uh, there's a woman who wants to do yoga classes. I believe I emailed that out to you guys as well. So I didn't know if you had a chance to look at it, if you wanted to give any feedback on that.
I don't have a problem with it.
What'd you say, Doug?
I don't have a problem with it.
Well, since we're, we're already doing it, we're again following the same format.
Yeah.
I guess I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Lobby?
Not, there's no charge for whoever's participating.
That was my thing is that I think that was the concern last time. As long as the classes are free, it's not an issue. But Tony can correct me. If we, if the lady starts charging for classes, then we're giving someone permission to run a, a business on our property.
As long as she's not charging, I don't have a problem.
She's willing to do it for free.
For free.
Volunteer her time.
Okay, yeah. All right.
What, what's your name again?
Fran.
Fran, uh.
Okay, is that, everybody agree on that?
Okay, we'll let her know. And I have one last thing. I just want to make sure before I proceed with, uh, doing any further work. I got contacted again from, um, the, I'm drawing a blank on his name now. The soccer, the, the soccer, Robert Palcham with the soccer thing. Um, what direction do we want to go with the soccer field? Would the board like me to start work on putting an RFP together to have someone, um, like his organization manage those fields? Cause our contracts are good through the end of May. He's been very patient and provided a lot of information to us, and he's sitting in a holding pattern right now, waiting for us to decide if we're going to keep doing things the way they are, or if we're interested in moving forward with something like that.
Well, I thought we deferred this till, uh, what was it, May?
Well, we need to make, we're going to do an RFP. I need to do it before May because I need time to get it done and get it out.
I think we need, I think we need to start putting, um, the, I would start with an RFI. Um, and, and let's start putting some requirements together because I think we need to be very clear on what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, what is our primary goals? Um, and it's to really drive revenue and to streamline the process, if you were to ask me.
Okay.
Um, and so I would at least put it out there, um, you know, have staff start working on it so we can review. Um, because this will be a significant shift in, in our field management structure, something we have not, we've not done this before. Um, but we're hitting a point where we're, we're going to have two options to look at. One, we either need to go in a completely different direction, uh, where we can maximize revenue through, you know, a centralized management entity. Um, or we're going to have to look at, you know, uh, raising some of the prices of the leagues. So there's, there's only two ways you can generate revenue. Well, there's a third. We can, we can save operationally, but that's pretty challenging.
Staff collect that.
Okay, I'll start putting it together. And I.
And Laura, I know, I know staff's been working on this, so I would, I would have them start to put, you know, a, a package together with requirements for, you know, uh, you know, one option, which is a management entity. Two, what do we need to be looking at from a league cost perspective if we decided just to stay with what we have? But knowing that we may have to raise some prices and that price, those prices. But knowing that we may have to raise some prices and that price, those prices that we raise, it needs to be something that's based on real numbers, right? We've had some problems in the past where we arbitrarily pulled some number out of the air. So we need to, you know, compare to other, you know, other facilities, other leagues. What is our lighting price? You know, how much additional capital are we trying to put in reserves, you know, to cover, you know, continued lighting or field maintenance or whatever? And again, we're not trying to accrue everything at once. We probably need to look at what we need, you know, in our, you know, in our planning, you know, for the next, you know, ten years, twenty years. Um, and amortize it that way, but we need to have both options. But I can't stress enough that it needs to be numbers that we can justify.
Okay, I'm about sixty percent done with that as far as getting together. I think I'm about a little over half done.
Perfect, thank you.
That actually is. That is everything I have.
Uh, just one thing, just going back on the yoga, if we, if it's going to be a schedule, maybe we can post that on the website or maybe on the, if she's going to have a set schedule for any Gateway residents, we can, if we can post that. And in regards to the soccer field, I did notice on Tuesday, and I, I, so I, I don't know if it was an issue with the lighting or they weren't necessarily supposed to be here, but Tuesday I had my H eight meeting and I left around seven thirty. And I noticed that the last field near the dog park, there were about twenty-five to thirty adults playing soccer. The lights were off and they had all their cars on the sidewalk with the headlights aiming to get light.
I'm guessing they didn't reserve the field.
Yeah, so I, I first I was like, oh my God, did we forget to get the lights going? So can we close those gates after six? I mean.
We can, but then you have to pay someone to come back to do that.
Yeah, I mean, this is the conversation that I've actually had with staff on seeing if we can provide better, better oversight on that piece. And we're going to have to, as a board, we're going to have to really have some conversations on, you know, better ways to secure our parks and just, just the community as a whole. I mean, I, I've kind of been talking about it for a couple of years about, you know, maybe having our own security within Gateway. I don't know if it's the appropriate time again, but you're going to have that until you have some governance on it. Uh, what we talked about was, you know, uh, you know, maybe even looking at hiring someone to, to kind of oversee maybe some of the weekend activity. But if we're seeing on a Tuesday night, I, I, it's really, it's really a pain in the butt to lock those gates all the time.
Where they've been able to turn them on.
And then we, then we got a maintenance cost of hiring somebody to do, it, it just goes on and on and on.
Well, it's in liability too. So, I mean, it's, you know, anyway.
We can go look back and take a look at it because I mean, there were, there were tons of cars everywhere. I mean, all we need is one and.
We do have cameras, but I don't believe that they look at the fields. I think they monitor the concession stand.
Nothing in the parking lot?
Hmm, I'd have to look. I don't recall.
Well, I know we paid for Lee County Sheriff's Office for, you know, what is it, fifty thousand dollars contract a year? Can we have him start coming this way and?
I can ask them, yeah, because they're, I'm just. I'm waiting for them to send over the new contract and the new schedule so I can.
Will they, will they shoot somebody out?
I believe we had it, I think. They go point, so why would they not do it here?
Yeah, they're supposed to have the fields reserved.
And that's blatant, you know, that's, that's past hours of operation. So if they're out there at night and the lights aren't on, that's clear indication that no one should be on those fields after, after, uh, after dark without lights.
I think with headlights.
Right, because they would have a key for the lights if they're supposed to be there.
Sounds like a little bagger Vance. Uh, okay. Any, anything else on that? Uh, Bill or Doug, anything for Laura?
No.
Going on, Kenny's not here.
Kenny, I can give one quick update. Uh, actually had two things on here. Uh, the new vehicle purchase. Uh, they were able to find a, well, we don't actually have the truck yet, but it's on order. It'll be about three or four months before we get it. It was approximately thirty-eight, thirty-four thousand dollars for a used, or van, I'm sorry, the van, a used one. And, uh, we got a, a new one for twenty-nine, I think, where's Austin, who's not here? I think it was twenty-nine thousand. I didn't, I forgot to write the numbers down, but it's considerably less. So we'll be able to get it, equip it and everything for less than we would have paid for a used one.
Is there a staff recommendation that we need to take an action on?
No, we already did.
Already did.
We've already, it was, it was within the dollar a month that you guys approved for the vehicle. So I've already issued the purchase order and signed the intent to purchase and we're just waiting for it to come.
Three or four months.
Three or four months, they said. And then also the new hydraulic trailer that you approved at, I think it was the last board meeting that has been ordered as well.
Good.
Anything else that Kenny had that we want to go over other than the things that are going to come up later on the maintenance building?
Um, I don't think there's anything else on here. No, I can let him fill you guys in at the next meeting when he's back.
Well, I'm going to bring up later something that came up relative to that sewer debacle over in Callaway Greens.
Oh, yes.
Impact. Uh, okay, nothing else, uh, for Kenny, Scott?
Yep, Scott Connell, uh, project management. In your agenda, there's a, uh, sort of an overview of what we're proposing to do for the bathometric survey, core sampling and the aeration design. There's an outline of, of some of the pros and cons and, and things. And the recommendation after, L brought it to me and we collaborated and contacted, uh, vendors, uh, engineers, surveyors and other professionals. And, um, we're sort of, need to go at this at a multi-pronged attack, if you will. Number one, on the recommendation plan, uh, is to engage with Tetra Tech to coordinate for the FPL, uh, for the electrical service, for the proper routing and things. This is key. This is, this is vital. I was here back when we did Pelican Preserve Phase One Aeration Program. It was done by a consultant and, uh, it was a mess. I ended up redoing it myself for all the electrical service, contacting the FPL service provider, working it all out, um, where you have adequate power supply, et cetera, et cetera. And it took months. Uh, so recommendation is that we engage with Tetra Tech. I've already talked to them, get them a task authorization to start working on this. We can give them the, uh, proposed, uh, service loads and things like that. So we can, uh, start working on a preliminary plan, plan on that. At the same time, um, we would probably want to go ahead and start doing the core sampling, uh, for what material are in the ponds. And we have a, uh, a vendor on, uh, online already, Sanders Lab, who we use currently through all utilities. I've contacted them and we can coordinate with them to take the samples and test for, uh, heavy metals and other pollutants that are in the, in the list here.
Who collects the samples?
They do.
Sanders would take it.
And how do they tie that to the bathometric so that the GPS is online?
Well, we can, we can stake where they took the sample. And then when they come out to do the, in item two there, where we do the bathometric survey from a vendor. And they also will do the survey of the pond and L's already gathered the information for the pond numbers, uh, the surface area, a lot of information. And a draft set of specs is, is attached here on, uh, agenda page seventeen. Um, and we'll be able to, again, work with Tetra Tech, pull together the, uh, the RFP for the survey and the aeration design. Um, and, and pull this together. But, uh, again, it's several entities involved. So, um, yeah, if you look at page, agenda page fifteen, uh, per the capital improvement budget and the numbers and things, and I broke down what the budget is and some of the criteria. And there are currently, uh, one, two, three, four local vendors that, that do this aeration design. And unfortunately, when L went out first time, because it included the core sampling, the aeration design and the power,
It'll well do.
Nobody wanted to do that. It was too much for one firm to handle. They didn't want to put all that together. So she did not get a good response. Um, so anyway, we divided, we said, let's divide and conquer and break it up, uh, per the, uh, per the disciplines that can, that can handle this.
So ultimately, we're going to come up with a design that we can power through FPL that's going to be facilitated by Tetra Tech working on, on our behalf to do that. And then we're going to go out with basically a des- design bid build of the vendors that will actually come in with their product to put in what you've got designed.
Right, we, we would, in a nutshell, yes, we will provide them this, the parameters for their design. Um, what, and, and that's what part of the spec is in here. And you know, move the column of water every twenty-four hours, blah, 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 blah. So all that's specific.
You're going to give them the basic components that you want, that they will all be able to bid on. And then they will have their own little intricacies of what they offer that maybe somebody else does.
Right, but we're going to do the, uh, preliminary work, uh, which is the heavy lifting on finding the service point for the electrical power.
That's.
I mean, Bob, Bob remembers.
There's more money spent in providing electric and getting everything in the right easement areas than it was for equipment.
Yes.
Well, I, I know several months ago, I talked FPL on this variation concerned what it was going. And I was shocked as to what they will do and certainly what they won't do. They basically tell you, you bring what you want to do and I'll tell you if I could do it. And two, you pick up the tab to make it happen.
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap.
Yeah. So what Bob is referring to is we'll pick a location on the pond where the aerator should go, a logical location. And then we'll work with Tetra Tech on finding the access route for the electrical service to go to where the existing power is. Whether it's a handhole, a transformer, or whatever is in the closest vicinity through the proper easements. And then, uh, then you put in your service point, your.
You have the noise considerations and satisfying all the, uh, various.
This is what we talked about. And those would be parameters that are in there that so many decibels and that type of deal. Well, the issue is, is that Tetra Tech is going to be taking a essentially ten aerial photos of these ponds, superimposing on them the electrical transformer drops that are in the community along the lake. And then determining where the accesses to the lake are for, to go down to the.
And if the box has capacity.
Well, that's when we get.
That's, that's the problem. They're bloody boxes, but they're all.
The power box.
Yes.
That's what you take to the service planner with FPL and, and confirm that.
Okay. So.
So.
And, and, and is Tetra Tech giving us back a response of what their cost is to do that task?
We have talked, I would like to give them a task authorization to do that. I told them what the budget is here. And, uh, they are comfortable with that, but I don't want to put words in their mouth. I mean, I'll, I will request, if you'll authorize it, we'll request a task authorization from them for.
From them, okay.
You know, they did it before. This, this is not new. You know, they did it sending it belly. The only comments I had in reading all this is to make sure that we stay at a minimum of a hundred percent turnover rate. You know, for every pond, uh, that the diffusers are no greater than a hundred feet apart, you know, so you don't have dead zones. Uh, one of the things that we learned was to standardize the horsepower pumpage. Don't get half horsepower, three quarter or stick with the one and a half all the way through. Because later on, when it comes time to replace things and maintain them, you don't want to have an inventory of ten million dollars worth of different kind of parts. And it's, you know, standardizing, those are the kind of things that are in there. And then again, the only in the easements.
So you, you need a, uh, consent from the board to go ahead and proceed with getting a task order from Tetra Tech.
Correct.
Motion to do that?
A second.
Uh, Gary, uh, Bill, any questions on this?
None.
None, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, five oh. Uh, one thing that I saw on this recommended action plan that, uh, raised my, uh, eyebrow. I don't know if it did yours or you caught it, but assuming all these ten ponds require aeration, I can't think of a thing that I have read, seen, observed that would indicate any reason not to have all ten of them. So I don't know why we had that. Every pond should have the aeration.
Except for the golf course, uh, irrigation, everything else we've got.
Okay.
I, 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 I hope these numbers can.
I do, yeah, me too.
You know, a lot more money than we ever thought.
Okay. Uh, anything else, uh?
Well put together proposal.
No, no, thank you. Appreciate your time and input.
Uh, L, uh, stormwater specialist on the, all of the pretty pictures and information that, uh, you got.
Good afternoon, L Harris, Gateway Services District. And thank you, Bob. I appreciate that compliment. My stormwater service report is, or service report, inspection report is in the book there. And, you know, if you've had a chance to read over it, if you have any questions.
Only question I had was is that I noticed the word no a couple of times to where.
Compliant with contract.
Huh?
Compliant with contract.
Uh, yes, uh, the, uh, what's next when we say no?
They need to come, they need to cut, they need to come out and fix it. That, that's what it is.
Why do we need to tell them that they need to do what they know they should do?
That's why.
The same reason I had, whoa, whoa, let me answer, please. The same reason I had to go to Tetra Tech three times and tell them I couldn't get to where number three.
Which probably.
With the, with the access easement over there. Sometimes you say it and say it and say it and what do you do? How many times do you have to tell somebody something? Sometimes you have to tell them three or four times. But if they are not in compliance, I get with them right away and make them, and let them know what they need to be prepared to do when they come back out here.
I have two questions. So this, how long has the, the new contract been taking effect at? A month?
About, a little over, about a month.
Yeah, about forty-five days.
So.
We don't, we haven't actually signed the official contract yet. We had a purchase order in place in the meantime until we could get off.
Okay, so they haven't had a chance in one month to visit all ponds? Is that maybe?
Yes, they have.
They have?
They have, yes. And then, you know, I follow up, this is actually from last month. This is not January inspections. I'm still in the process of getting the January inspections.
So I think what we do is just wait till the next meeting and look at the report and hope to see and, and the, the same no, not there again.
Well, the gut check.
Correct.
In, in the November report, everybody was okay. Did we change suppliers for this?
We, we have changed suppliers.
December would have been a transition month because for part of the month it actually was aquogenics, so.
But we are getting caught up out there. And, you know, yeah, there's a few places that say no, but you'll notice a few places in there too. I say, there's three areas that are too wide. Now those areas might be down to one or two areas that are too wide, but they still need to go back in there and fix that.
Do we?
So that, that's why they're not in compliant with the contract or not in compliance with the pond standards. They still have one area they need to go back and address again.
Do we send this document to the vendor and say comments?
I don't ask them, I don't ask them for comments. I just send it to them.
I should say excuses as to why the no's are there.
Okay, send the vendor and ask for comments.
Just say, hey, guys, we're, we're watching you and we want, we want a repair back. Why was this? If they come back and admit that they did it, going to have a hard time putting it in there the second time.
And then do we give them a time to fix it? So if we see there's a problem and we know that, and we give it to them? Are we going to wait to thirty days or they have to, since they fail?
It should be.
Come back within a week, I would say, if it was on them.
I don't know that there is specific language, um, but they do know, I have communicated with them many times that when I come back out there the next time, I expect to see that they have been there and made an attempt to, um, correct what I had noted. If there's too much torpedo grass, you need to make sure you come back and address that on your next visit. If there's grasses growing in the stone, next time I come out, I better not see this grass is growing in the stone or I better see that they have been treated.
Well, if you take and send this to them and have them address the deficiencies, that puts the, uh, burden on them to, to not have it happen again.
Well, they should respond within seven days what they're going to do. They may not do it, but they ought to tell you, I'll have it done by the, whatever.
And, and they do, they are fair, they have been very communicative, I should say. Um, they, they are following up with me when I send them an email. Um, I was having a little issue getting service reports from them in the beginning and I'm like, look, I see only seven ponds. I know you've done more. I saw your vehicles out here, so I need you to get caught up on these service reports.
You, you familiar, somewhat familiar with the Pelican reporting system right now?
I am. I am.
Would that be good for us? I don't have a, an opinion one way or the other. I've just.
I do, what I like to see is if she sends these to them, I'd like to see their response at the next meeting.
Well, the good part about this is, as L was familiar, when I, when there's a complaint or whatever, you can circle it right there or electronically and it goes to immediately electronically. That's what I liked about it.
I send them dots on the map all the time.
Okay, well, I, if it doesn't add value, it doesn't make your job easier, then I'm not pushing.
Well, sometimes, you know, and the thing is too, is if I go out and a wetland inspection and I happen to come across an area where I found, you know, three or four pepper tree saplings, I tell them they need, I, I let them know that it's there. I found it. And when I go back, it should be gone, but I shouldn't have to tell them where it is. It's their job to make it through the entire area. It's their job to make it around the entire pond.
Because, yeah, I see that you, you know, talk about the conservation areas. You, you look at it monthly, but we're only paying them for twice yearly, is that right?
Uh, we have quarterly treatments in our wetlands, yes. And no, and yet I look at them, I don't look at every wetland every month.
I, I think if we send this to them and. I, I think if we send this to them and then ask for their response prior to the next meeting, you're gonna see a little bit more, uh, attention being paid to the, the details. They aren't gonna want that be showing up twice.
And last but not least, um, there was two, two items on here. One had to do with Thalia on the golf course side. And one, there was a comment on, uh, 118 was a vertical erosion on the golf course side.
Yes.
You make note of that. Now they wouldn't address the erosion.
They would not address the erosion.
Is that typically addressed by just going in there and.
Where's this at? On the 10th hole, 11th hole?
Um, there's erosion up and down several ponds along the golf course side.
This isn't something new.
It is not anything new, no.
The answer would be just come down with a grader and get it back to the board one?
Oh, we did 118. We did the residential side in stone, but we didn't address.
Specifically golf.
Golf course side, it, there's problems.
Just.
There is.
Just ignore them because we've taken the position that we're not spending our money on the golf course side.
Well, we could, it could be, it could be addressed by just scraping down.
No, you'd have to bring in fill material to, to eliminate. Yeah, yeah. Cause there's, if you scrape down, what you're gonna do is you're gonna scrape back into the golf course and you got, they got a real problem.
Well, yeah, that's exactly. That's the cheapest thing you do. Okay. And Thalia on the golf course side, is that we're concerned about that or is your comments with golf?
No, it is in our pond standards that they have, they have, yes. No Thalia in any of the ponds anywhere.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, let me ask why?
According to our pond standards.
But I mean, it's a beneficial, it's a Florida beneficial.
I know that.
Okay. It's just something that we've chosen.
It is, it is something that the ponds committee chose.
The place the problem is, Bob, is on, on the golf course where the Thalia is growing is it's a deterrent to playability.
Well, I hate Thalia.
If we can.
But I wanted to eliminate it in all our conservation areas, but we couldn't do that.
No, what we're trying to do is maintain the Thalia at like what, three feet to where you can.
Yes.
You can.
We eradicate the Thalia. We do not maintain it at three feet, at three feet. We spray it out.
Seven feet, you couldn't see.
I know. I mean, a three foot Thalia, wouldn't even notice.
Yeah.
It's these giants. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Ralph?
I do have a question in regards to the, the wetland by the pool. I know we had requests. The wetland in the pond, you know, by the pool that all, we have all those tree branches, but I, and it's conservation easement. What is it? Is it wetland?
It is a, it is a jurisdictional wetland. It's a conservation area.
We need to do something about that because I know Judy's been asking for almost two years.
Backs up to Eagle Point.
It's pretty bad. So I don't know if we.
Well, there's a few, it.
It's, I, I, I think the majority, Elle, it looks, looking at the pond standards, how it says it's not supposed to have anything in the water, brushes. There's a lot of vegetation, color, whatever it is. I'm not even talking about the latoras that are hanging into the water. So I, I'm concerned about that area.
Um, yes, and I do have that on a list and I wanted, I was holding off, um, until we had our new vendor, just like the, down at the end of Lake 84. I want to, I want to get a lot of things down there pruned up and because they are hanging over the edge of the water. Um, that wetland actually would benefit greatly from a burn.
That's what I was.
And I do know that, um, I did just get some contacts, um, for a company.
Yeah. I, I think at this point, a controlled burn of that.
It, it would benefit greatly. That one and the one behind it as well would benefit greatly from a controlled burn. Um, they, they both have a lot of the ripe snut rush in there.
So what would you need from us if you want to go out and get a, an estimate to do a controlled burn in that location? Because that would be outside of the contract in terms of how.
Yeah, they actually cross creek doesn't do that sort of work. You have to have a special license to, to do a controlled burn.
Firm that we use.
Um, the one that I got was Friendly Fire. Um, now that was, um, Bob.
That's quite a name.
The, um, the gentleman that, remember he did the, he did wetlands 47 and 48.
That's why I said.
That gentleman passed away. So I lost, no, so I had no contact. I just was, uh, provided a new contact for that firm, which, which I'm contacting to see if I can get a price for them to do that.
I agree with Flavia. Let's go ahead and get the price for a couple of these so that we know what we're working with. Cause I think that's what needs to be done is those need control burns.
Uh, 51 Cypress Links also could use one.
Yeah, anything that I guess.
Let's do that and come back with what, what we're looking at on those. Cause that is, that is extra.
It is. Yeah, that's outside of the, that's outside of any contract.
I can't remember the last time a control burn was done here until we go back to the controversial 47, 48.
Yeah, that was, um, actually we did this one later on, right here behind Timber Ridge and Daniel's Preserve. We did, um, I think it's number 38. Forestry did it. Uh, the division of forestry came in and they, they did it.
Let's go ahead and get the.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks, Elle. I know. Knew you'd remind me. Jim?
Talk fast.
Hi, yes, Jim Kennedy Landscaping. We're out of the ponds and onto the land now. So, um, I tried to do the report, uh, as Flavia suggested, a little bit more concise and, uh, uh, not so much we mowed the grass this week, we mowed the grass last week, we mowed the grass the week before. So there was some highlights and I appreciate your help, Flavia and Laura. Laura's a big help as well as Elle. With some of this, uh, operational kind of putting it together. But, uh, as you can see, we, um, had a lot going on. This is the report from December. As I've got to have this in as of 10 days ago. Uh, so the fall change out was done in begonias. I don't know if you noticed, some of the begonias was rather small. Um, I've got with Freddie and he did replace some of those begonias uh, with some geraniums. We're also replacing some more. That's some of the irrigation problems that we've had along the Boulevard. They will be replaced in Stony Brook and then there's another spot there close to Girl Scout. Pardon me?
By Eagle Point?
By Eagle Point, yes.
Is this one of the documents that we were talking about earlier? That we could take and eliminate some of that time by allowing him more time to get more data to us?
Yes. All of our, all of our updates and our reports would be affected by that.
That would be very helpful then.
Right. Yeah, this is kind of going back because it's, I don't get the report from them until like the fifth or sixth of the month. And it has to be in prior to that for the first meeting. So the second meeting really works out a lot better. So, we also started the major renovations along the Boulevard there. I don't know if you've noticed, uh, we've taken a lot of the old grasses. The old packahatchie grass that was looking pretty shabby in some other areas. And for now, we filled them in with sod. Um, I've gotten, people come up to me in the 7-Eleven, in fact, and saying how much better it looked and cleaner, the lines. And I think it will improve as we go along. We're doing some other stuff as we go up towards Daniel's, uh, in the median there with some, uh, with some actual plants. We're not gonna just fill everything in with sod, but, um, so the palm pruning was also done in, uh, December. Uh, Joshua did Stony Brook, uh, finished that up. I have here, we're, we're almost finished. I think, uh, at this point, personal touch is done with the palm pruning, except for the monument, uh, out there near Stony Brook at 82 and Gateway. Uh, there's 32 palms there that, um, we can't get to because the ball field over there, we can't get into the back because it's, it's more like a ocean than it is.
We pay them by the truckload that we haul off?
No, sir.
I was like, I hope not.
No, it's a flat, they, they've been a flat amount for the whole year.
Volume of that material was unbelievable.
Yeah, it is. It really is. And well, and the reason for that, it haven't been done. And, uh, yeah, those palms hadn't been done in two to three years. So I don't know what the prior company was doing, but I know as well, they were not debuting the palms. And I think since we kind of, with the help of Miss, Mrs. Walsh there, uh, pro, you know, prodding, personal touch, we've actually got them going in the right direction. Yeah, that's, that's, uh, 2,300 palms. So, um, and now they're starting on the oaks. I don't know if you noticed as you were coming in there. I wanted some of the, uh, the fields, the, in the parking lot because I think, uh, we're gonna have, Scott's gonna have that paved here very soon, right? The parking lots and all. So, um, I've had them do that. And then there's some other areas I want them to start on where some of the branches were hanging down low with the sidewalks. Uh, so they're gonna continue with that with the oaks. So, and that's all under contract.
Any action that we need to be taking?
Uh, no, sir, not really. The, um, the only thing I'm gonna come up with is, uh, for the fields, as we were talking before. I really echo the sentiments. That's too, to have adults out there playing real football, it'd be three yards and a cloud of dust. It's, the field, the, those fields would be, would be just.
Practice my golf wedge.
Exactly. Well, I about ran two of them off this week. They were out there hitting drivers. And they told me it wouldn't hurt anything because they were teeing it up. I thought, well, what about the kids standing over there?
If their names tie your woods, they might hurt anything, but I can tell without tearing up.
Exactly.
Anything else?
Uh, not really. Just the, the customer service report that we get that, uh, Mainscapes has put together for us. I, you know, noted how many there was, the inquiries. The two that were overdue have been corrected. So everything's been done that I put in for, uh, for the month of December.
Questions?
I just, uh, well, uh, just two things. Um, I guess I would like to let personal touch know, like, that we appreciate them really picking it up. I haven't left the house in last two days, so I don't know, have they finished the center median by the pool? The palm trees? Cause that was not done.
Yes.
Oh, they did? Okay, good. Any, any, um, response from the Gateway Charter School in regards to that wetland?
Nothing.
Okay, so now.
I don't know what the next step is really.
Report them now, Tony?
We sent the certified letter.
It's a, it's a wetland and the LME.
No, sir, it's, actually it's the north east side as your entrance into the, to the school. The corner of that, the, go ahead.
They're not doing it. So it's not being maintained. So. Yes. Yeah, okay. We sent them a certified letter. I think that's what Chris and it's been, oh, nine months?
Yes. It's been a couple of months since, since we sent the letter.
Especially if we already put them on notice.
Yeah. And we, you had another area, I remember this one by the school, but you had another one. I think it was by Dennis Preserve or somewhere around that area that didn't.
Yeah, it was the one that, uh, when you're going back to Daniel's Preserve, right along that pond that before you get to the commercials.
On the right-hand side?
Yeah, on the right-hand side.
Right, yeah.
Yes, not us.
Yeah, that's, uh, that, I can't remember the name of it, but, right, for that whole commercial center.
Yeah, it's that, yeah, yeah. Elle's, Elle's familiar with what I'm talking about. Cause we had a broken pipe back in there that we, I don't know how, how we would get to it.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
You'd have to have a Ramar to take in there.
So that's the one, the only one thing that I want us to probably continue to follow up with. There are areas that if we're not responsible for, find out who they are and notify them, you know?
See, I don't know that we've notified that one that you're talking about on Daniels.
No, they would, we'll notify the school and then we'll notify the Daniels in regards to the maintenance, which the county came in care of that.
Well, we need to take the second step because they were warned. This one here needs to get the first step that they need to clean it up. Or we're gonna take it to South Florida.
Okay, we can do that. The only other thing I have is about the sidewalk they were talking about. The maintenance of it, the future maintenance of it and the ADA compliance. Are they gonna take care of that?
I don't know how in the world.
I'm kind of getting into the sidewalk, so.
They've got addresses, their sidewalk.
It's their sidewalk.
Okay.
I, I wasn't talking about.
The county, I'm assuming.
That, that, that thing that I handed out to get the, for the grant to put the sidewalks in. Cause that, that would not be our sidewalk. That's their sidewalk.
So I do have under sidewalk here. So is that with you? Um, no?
Sometimes. I don't care. I'll do whatever they want me to do.
I'll figure it out. Okay.
Are you talking about over there on?
Yeah, because, yeah, because I know you met with the vendor over there in regards.
Yeah, we've already done, yeah.
We're addressing it.
Yeah, where they're gonna put some drain head in.
We got two in already, the one right over here that always, that I kept telling them.
You talk about, we talk.
The one over by the pool. I was talking about Gateway Boulevard, but you're talking about Silver Lakes.
We're talking on Gateway Boulevard.
I'm talking about the pool on Gateway Boulevard. They're gonna be putting some drains in there.
Okay.
And there was two spots over there. So the first spot, not the one we looked at. There was another one closer to. Right. That we've already got it in there. We've got the drain in there.
How, how they gonna do it? They gonna do like a little mini French drain?
Little French drain.
Yeah. We went and looked, I actually met.
Slope is about that much.
I met with the contractor and we looked at the way the, everything flowed and that was, then I met with Jim and we, that was the best.
And that stuff's like concrete too.
Yeah. So yes, it will be addressed soon. We, I did the purchase order for it, so it should be done shortly.
Okay, though.
All right.
I don't have anything else. Okay, thank you. Have a good one.
Let's see if we can catch up. Jim? Anything? You're on.
All right. Tim Holland, Commons Pool Supervisor, back into the water from the land. So just a couple of quick updates. Our new horizontal filter that we ordered, uh, several weeks ago, should be installed, uh, the second week of March. So that'll be done and everyone's looking forward to that. Uh, new furniture, really looking forward to that. And that looks like we're probably gonna be near the end of March before that arrives.
This is what we approved at the last.
Yeah, yeah. It's all been paid for, well, half down anyhow, uh, on both of those projects. Um, then we'll have to put the last 50% down on arrival. So last week, the last of our old pool heaters, uh, deceased. So we, uh, I ordered a new pool heater. Uh, last year we installed one. It's a Jandy as opposed to the old Raypacks. The difference is we were operating prior to my arrival, four Raypack heaters. Two were non-operable when I arrived. So we were operating two. One died last year, replaced one. The final one goes in now. So we will be using two heaters in the pool, which are new, efficient. They're gonna do the job of what, what we were previously doing with four. So, uh, some new improved stuff going in there, which is great. On, don't have the date here. December 16th, we had our bi-annual state of Florida Department of Health inspection. All went well. Uh, we met all our criteria to pass our inspection, but the inspector, uh, she did indicate that we were in violation with, uh, the gutter tread coping, which, uh, you can visualize the pool. Um, it's the raised portion that runs the perimeter of the pool. And on the tread, we have a 12-inch section of two by two tiles. And in, in several locations, uh, it's, you could call it delaminating, but what's happened is water gets down there. It turns to steam during the hot season. It actually pops the tiles off. So we can have no tripping hazards, um, no cleanliness hazards there. It's, it's a, uh, safety issue. So she marked us down for that. Uh, generally, they can do two things. They can say a date that this has to be repaired by. She put it down as a note, as a consideration for us because it's the first time that she saw it. Um, but it's something that's gonna have to be addressed.
Somebody putting together a proposal?
Yeah, I've got three people that I'm hoping to come out and take a look at it quick. Uh, one person, I sent the linear footage out to and some pictures. And the other two are gonna be coming out to take a look at it. So when I get numbers, I'll let you know that. That probably will be, in, in addition to what is my regular budget. It's not something we would have had an expenditure for.
We need to know.
And, and we'll put those numbers together. Um, the company that's doing the horizontal filters is the same company I had previously come out and do a bid for the remodel of the pool. So in conjunction with this price I'm gonna get for the, the tread, I'm gonna have them come out when they do the filters and give me a price on, again, an updated cost of redoing the pool. Cause I think, again, we need to weigh our options and I'll just present you some different sets of numbers when, when I arrive at those. Let's see if I had anything else on here. Um, just a point of interest. I mentioned previously, I began using a product called Citrus Shield to control the mold and the black algae on, on my surface areas. Uh, not so much on the deck, but the sidewalks and other areas, including fences, metal, gutters, anything. And it works real well so far. Uh, the gentleman owns the company, his name is Ray. He will be out at my pool, uh, 10 o'clock next Wednesday. And he has volunteered to do a sample section of sidewalk and valley gutter. Um, in hopes obviously that he can gain some visibility and maybe get his foot in the door with Gateway. Um, if y'all want to come by and take a look at what he's doing there. So you can see Jim's gonna stop by. Um, he's familiar with the product and what I've used at the pool here.
We, we've got somebody at Gateway Greens that does ours. Uh, what was the name of this?
Citrus Shield. I, I have some.
The sidewalk at the pool?
He's gonna do what I've got, I, I picked about 150 foot of sidewalk and valley gutter going towards where the pedestrian gate is. So when you walk out of our pool gate, the main sidewalk that loops around, we're gonna do all the way to the, to the main gate. So from the pedestrian gate, the sidewalk that goes around to the front gate.
Does he put this in with a brushing, using brushing at the same time?
So what he does, it actually, it does, it does brush, but you don't need to brush his product. You simply spray it on dry. And, and it works almost like an enzyme. And he can explain it a lot better than I can. And I brought this in case anyone's interested, just some information he gave me if you want to pass those around, if anyone wants to research it. But, uh, if it works like it has worked for me, um, and Rick, our. But uh, if it works like it has worked for me, um, and Rick, our maintenance department, Rick, has mentioned to me that he has at times pressure washed the monuments we have and uh, the way he says it, more stucco comes off than mold. Um, this is something where you just be able to spray on and not have to pressure wash literally ever again. So anyhow, just thought if anyone was interested, he'll stop by. And again, that's ten o'clock on Wednesday.
Yeah, cause we do this on our curbs and gutters and Gateway and we've gone to a similar system, but it's more of a, a brushing in it, in it also.
Right, right. He, his, his equipment has, it does have a little brush on it, but I think that's more just to spread, spread it than scrub it.
As I know, is staying up with this is expensive.
Yeah, the, what is?
Staying up with it.
Well, from what I understand about this product, long term, um, you will, the initial application i- is a stronger solution and takes ever so slightly longer. Um, and you do that every six months.
That's what.
And after six months, instead of a sort of a five to one ratio, you would go down to a nine to one ratio of the product. So it becomes cheaper as you, as you progress.
Sounds familiar.
So anyhow, that's all I got for y'all. If, if you have any questions.
What is the life of the new heaters?
Sure, all heaters, uh, but new heaters, uh, especially since that's what we got. You're looking at about five years.
Okay, do we have in the budget, have you forecasted money to get a third?
So e- each year, I try to forecast a large piece of equipment. Um, I knew that this would be, that there was budgeted for that.
We had enough, so we didn't have to move anything.
Right, we didn't have to come, come to you guys. No, no, that's what I'm saying. Once these two are done, we went from four to two.
Right.
And we're done.
What we need to do is divide the cost by five years.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
So in like four years.
Right, right. So down the road, trust me, we'll, we'll definitely budget for that as it comes along.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody have anything else for Tim?
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Action items. Trying to catch up.
Kenny's X C Austin.
Get Austin gonna, uh, set some.
He's been tasked. No, actually, it was supposed to be Austin all along, so it just says Kenny.
But lot, lot, lots of luck on this.
Kenny delegated.
Okay, so.
Kenny was smart.
Kenny did vacation, he's smart.
So Austin Manoli, Gateway Services District. So we had budgeted a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-two budget to begin the process of constructing a new maintenance building and I was tasked with uh, getting budgetary estimates for that, so. And this is just the summary of what I had found uh, from talking with various general contractors and steel building manufacturers.
Was the number that you were budgeting end of line, final product, or was that a phase one of going to that? Because we're not even in the ballpark of the numbers, not even in the ballpark.
I guess uh, phase one.
It's, it's phase, so, so the legitimate price of doing this is somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars?
Correct.
So we have three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars realistically that we could be looking at doing this and what it looks like to me, you've done is you've got two alternatives. One, where we do a design and we go to a contractor and they bid it, which came in with some pretty salty six-digit numbers. Or we go to a company that does the design build and they do it obviously at a lot lesser price.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a third option in here, um, that we've kicked the tires on a little bit, so. Uh, and feel free to jump in here, staff. Um, so looking at the options, just due to current inflation, the prices have just gone through the roof, right? It's, it's no longer cost effective to go down this path, um, without reinvesting or securing additional funding for it. The, the third option that may take a little bit of time, but it might be more cost effective if we can find the right facility, which would be to look within Gateway to see if there's a commercial building or another property that we could lease to do either one, storage, so we would have an off-site storage facility or um, even have an off-site storage facility with a administrative component to it. And there are several of these out there, but again, prices are high everywhere. We'd have to kinda get lucky. Um, I know that Gary and Kenny and staff have kind of been looking around a little bit on this, but I, I asked Laura to do some digging as well. I don't know if they found anything yet, but even if it's just a matter of, you know, finding a commercial realtor.
So you're just talking renting space, correct?
I'm saying.
You're just basically talking about renting space.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, unless we fell on something, but I think right now that the idea would be, we have, we have a problem we need to solve, which is space. Um, storage in speci- storage specifically for some of the inventory and items that we need. We could put some, you know, uh, some containers out, but again, that's not ideal. So again, this third option is, you know, it's an option. Uh, we may be able to find something. I think it would be more cost effective, even if we sign a year lease or maybe two year, um, just to get us through the hump. I don't think it would be that. Um, and I don't think it would negatively impact the staff having to go to an alternative location, especially if we create almost like a satellite maintenance office or something along those lines. So I, I don't know, staff, if we've gotten anywhere with this concept, but it, it is something that, that we have, that we discussed actually towards the end of last year.
Doug, where are you looking at? I, I thought I knew Gateway pretty well. I wasn't aware there was any place that would be able to do what were, that offers that and it even be getting a reasonable price for basically equipment storage building.
Well, it, it's not so much equipment as it is in- inventory, and I guess we could split hairs on what we, what we're calling equipment. So, I mean, just, I, I don't know of all the sites, but just as an example, like even over there where the brewery is, you can get double, uh, double base space and it almost gives us the square footage that we need and it does have an administrative front. There are a couple other places like that, not, not that many. Um, but again, the, you know, the board, to the board, the option here is just seeing what else is available that would be at a significantly lower cost than what we're seeing with the numbers coming back to put something onsite, more, more permanent structure.
Well, I think this is one that we can't kick the can down the road. We definitely have to do something, but we need some more numbers to make a decision of which way we go.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
But when Gary had called me in a couple of weeks ago about this, was introducing this, this didn't surprise me at all. Uh,
Yeah.
I was wondering how in the hell we had came up with that lower number in the first place. The, the, the numbers are real. I'm, I'm just concerned about what the uh, uh, term that we'd have to go on a contract with to lease property would be, uh, how would that lower the per, uh, cost per square foot if we would go two years, three years, five years or whatever, uh, to buy us time and get us out of this uh, what appears to be an inflationary hiccup.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think you're, the point you're making at is absolutely valid. Like, we don't know if this third option, if it's, if it's even cost effective. But what, what we do know is it is another option to look at that we haven't previously thought about. We were looking at onsite, you know, um, onsite building, whether that was fabricated or, you know, whatever. So I think the staff's done a really good job of trying to look at options for an onsite build. This would give us a third option of a potentially offsite location, but again, I don't know if it's viable, cause we don't have the numbers yet.
Have somebody, I agree with you. I think we need to have somebody on staff going ahead and let's start putting the numbers, calling a couple of these places, see if that option is uh, is viable, but I, I certainly question if, if it doesn't work in Gateway, boy, taking this outside the, the confines of Gateway becomes a night.
No, that doesn't work. And what I would probably do, Ed, is I wonder if Denny knows someone on the commercial side, cause I don't think he deals in any commercial.
Diddy Grimes?
I was gonna start there.
That might be.
Yeah, I would go to Denny and see if he, if he has anyone that he knows that operates, you know, in, in the Gateway space that can.
Okay, I'll take that.
Now, there, there's a fourth option that Kenny and I discussed, which is, we could restructure the base that we have today. Um, it wouldn't be ideal. We'd have to stack them, you know? Um, it, that again, would not be optimal, but that is a, an additional fourth, fourth option that would be used as a last measure.
And that means we'd have repurchasing equipment and then we got another one called OSHA that gets involved on that.
Kenny had mentioned something about redoing the inside of this building as well and using it for storage and then the whole admin area would move along with the boardroom to some other location. So that's another possibility too. Cause at least we have the climate control inside here.
Yeah, yeah, that's what's my concern about anything in Gateway. You're paying for climate control and climate control we don't need. So uh, it's gonna be salty on the, on the price on the cost analysis. Maybe on a long term, you might get a good deal, but I think Denny or Morgan's who to go to first.
That's where I was planning to start.
Okay, anything else, Austin? Uh, you handled that one smoothly. I wondered how you were gonna do it because those numbers were, were shocking to say the least.
It kinda reminded me of the uh, the, the parking or the storage facility we were looking at in the back of the soccer complex, how that went quadruple the numbers overnight, pretty much.
Yeah, Austin was coming to the meeting as a sacrificial lamb.
We kept telling him he was.
He was?
We've been messing with him ever, all the time.
Okie doke. Well, let's go ahead and get those numbers, cause uh, I agree with Doug. We've got to do something. This is uh, and our options aren't a lot.
No, I will start on that tomorrow.
Anything else, Austin?
Um, uh, just, all I've done is was summarize the numbers. Uh, one thing I did get was I got another quote from a, a more complete quote, at least from Costello Construction. They had given me a preliminary one, yeah. Um, that's the only thing that wasn't in the original uh, document that was sent out with the board book.
If I didn't know any better, I'd say all these guys together, but I think what it tells you is the market, it, it is what it is.
Yeah, it's very consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then. Yeah, I mean, other than uh, that's really all I had.
Soon as we get that information, let's uh, get back and try to figure out what our options are. Uh, Doug says like you've had a handle on this, so uh, when Denny or Morgan gets back to us, they may come back and tell us that.
That, there's no way we're gonna find anything.
Ain't gonna happen.
Right.
Find out.
Yep. And having this little extra time to put the things together will give me more time to put a report together for you as well, so.
Okie doke, go on.
All right.
Laura, uh, our arborist, uh, proposal.
Yes, uh, the board had asked me to reach out, um, after the meeting that we had in October for the tree and had the tree management plan and Ronnie is the, the person from Arborology who had presented that tree management plan. I've been having discussions with him back and forth. Um, he did come forward with a proposal. It would be uh, twenty-one thousand dollars for the annual consulting services. We do have enough money in the plant replacement program line where we could take that out of there, since this was not something that we budgeted for and because we're gonna be focusing on uh, the main, the first area will be on Gateway where the oak trees were removed, at least that was what the board had originally directed. So if we're gonna be replacing plants, I thought plant replacement program, so everything could just come right out of there.
And we did decide that going with him, because he does not have a dog in the.
Correct.
In the fight.
Correct.
This would be our best.
Yeah, and if you look, um, here's his, this is all he does. He, he just, he will just give recommendations for what to plant. He does not sell the trees. He does not plant the trees. He does not prune the trees. He has nothing in it except for to help us make Gateway look beautiful and, and be, you know, be able to maintain it at a reasonable cost going forward. That's what he does.
Quick questions from the board on the recommendation of staff to uh, approve the proposal from uh, this vendor.
No, I mean, go ahead, no, you go ahead.
Done.
No, I was just gonna say that um, I think in light of the sensitivity of, I mean, really for many years around um, plants, trees, direction, I think it's, um, I think it's the right thing for us to do, to pull in someone that can, can provide us with consulting that doesn't have that is, doesn't have any bias, um, when it comes to this. So to me, it's, it's a, it's a good thing for us to do.
No hidden agenda.
And he also, you know, he'll help us do a windstorm recovery program. He'll do pre and post hurricane tree inspections. That's all included in his fee.
Yeah, I saw that. Uh, Bill, did, were you trying to say something a while ago?
He's on mute.
I thought, okay.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just listening.
Okay.
I have one quick question. So with this, with this dollar amount, does it secure us a certain amount of hours or how do we quantify the engagement? Is that in here? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, everything looked good to me, uh, from the fact that it's, he's not got a side business.
Yeah, he has, he has nothing to gain from it, except for the fee that we pay him to do for his services. He has no.
We have something to gain. We have some.
We have a lot to gain from him, yes.
We have a professional.
Yes.
Board.
This money's coming from plant replacement?
That's what I was thinking, yes. Um, if we need to, I can always move, we have carry forward. I don't have the formal number yet, so if we end up needing it for the plant replacement, we can always take some money from carry forward to cover it, but we can bring that up.
Yeah, what I, what I wanna make sure that he understands is that, you know, this could be somewhat cyclical, the engagement. Um, so there might be a month where we don't use it. There might be another month where he's heavily engaged or for two months, he's heavily engaged. So I just wanna make sure that we're very clear on, on the quantifiable component of the contract.
Sure, based on the conversations that I had with him, I think he understands that the upfront stuff is gonna be a lot more demanding of his time, because we're gonna be asking him to, to put together the recommendations and do their parts. Yes, so he'll, we'll need him a lot more upfront than we will, you know, it won't be an even need each month.
And that's what residents are looking for. They wanna see our plan.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure he's aware of the, of the potential commitment from a time perspective as it, you know, as it aligns with certain initiatives and projects. So there might be some heavy time. I just don't wanna get to a point where, you know, you know, we engage him more than what he can manage for that particular month or whatever. So anytime there's, when it's a little bit more open-ended like this, you kinda open the door um, for some potential. I don't know if I call it dispute, but just, you know, as long as, as long as everyone's comfortable with just not being quantifiable.
Age low issue.
Yeah, I don't have, like I said, I don't have any, any, I'm, I'm just concerned where we're gonna take the money from, because when we allocated the replanting, it was to the penny. We had no extras.
Sure.
And we had a very small list of items that we needed to get done. They were just costly, so.
Well, if the board is okay with it, I can ask Sony to take an, uh, the twenty-one thousand dollars out of reserves and add it to that fund. That way, the twenty-one thousand dollars will cover his annual consulting and then the hundred thousand that we budgeted will still be left in there to do what we need to do, if you're okay with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, the arborist is very important to the character of our community.
I think he's very, very important, yeah. He's, he's very knowledgeable and he's, he's very good. He, he works really well on a, on a level where he can talk to the residents at the resident knowledge level as well, so, yeah.
I would hate to find five years from now that we, if we had done something in twenty twenty-two, we wouldn't be in the problem we're in then.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Seeing, seeing that we seem to be all on the same focus here, a motion to approve the recommendation to uh, accept the proposal from Arborology Inc.
I'll second your motion.
Questions? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving the twenty-one thousand into the.
Yes.
Yeah, I prefer that.
Okay, I, I would do, but I just figured I would leave that as an option. So, okay, I'll have Sony make the move.
Take that as a five oh.
Thank you.
Good job, we get that going.
He's been very easy to work with for me too. I mean, I have no problem getting ahold of him, so.
Hey, and one, one quick thing just to add with there, and something for us to think about, is part of this consulting engagement, I'd love to have maybe even just a town hall, um, you know, maybe twice a year, just a place where the residents can come in and kinda talk about their concerns, you know, he can educate, you know, the, the residents as well. Just something to think about.
Doug, I, I agree. When he starts getting into this to, when he, he thinks he would be, let's say, uh, able to provide something meaningful to the people, I think rather than waiting until it's dropped on him as a package, you know, wrapped up with a ribbon and everything, we make them feel like they've got input to this guy. I think that would be.
Preliminary, we got the, this is the plan we're looking at. We wanna get some input before we finalize it.
Be a good bullet point for a president's meeting.
Yeah.
Well, it's, and, and it would be nice maybe to have him come to a president's meeting too, but, you know, what, what I'm thinking about is, one is, you know, giving the, giving the residents an outlet, but two, I learned a lot in the meeting that, that he attended. So there was, there's a lot of education. Um, but I think he can, he can pass down to the residents, whether it's on what our philosophy is with the types of trees that we have, what we need to look out for, how we're gonna do things differently moving forward, you know, what things weren't done in the past that created an issue that we're at today. So if it's coming from him, there's a sense of more validity to it than if it's us just rambling this stuff in a meeting.
Especially talks the talk. That's the big thing. Okie doke. Uh, Laura, uh, Matarita bond release.
I'm gonna defer to Tony.
This is a combination of Steve, Steve Goppi, myself and Laura. These are, uh, WCI had requested the release of the remaining reduced three-year bonds for Matarita two A and Matarita Phase two Carina. And so we can, with Stephen, whether or not there are any issues with either one of those two from a district conveyed infrastructure perspective, uh, and also ask Laura. Uh, so my understanding is, and Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, that is, as to these two project, you're not aware of any defects or deficiencies or anything needing, um, standpoint of what facilities were conveyed to the district?
This is Stephen. Yep, this is Stephen Agapi with Tetra Tech. Yeah, that is correct. I'm not aware of any outstanding issues in those areas.
No berm buildings or anything else like that.
The short drainage pipe is not part of this?
That's in Track L. And where's Track L, Stephen?
Track L is in Materita Phase 1. So it's west of Materita Phase 2.
It's not in these. We have.
It's not part of this.
It's not a part of this.
It's not part of this. But on, I'll mention it after we've completed this item. I'll mention my latest letter I got from the attorney from Lenar on that today. It was interesting.
So do we need to take an action on this?
Yes, to be, to.
We just need the approval of the board to release the bonds.
Release the bonds.
Well, I guess I'm throwing something out since, are we getting cooperation on the L project? Because if we're not, why do we want to get this?
Would try their feet.
Which project?
If we're not getting action on their side, drag our feet.
That's what I'm saying. If we haven't gotten the resolution to the short drain pipe that we recognized in, in Materita 1.
Then we'll, then we'll table this item. Is what the.
Until that's resolved, I would not like to do this yet.
Set on this.
Okay.
I will, I will pass that information along to.
I guess this suggestion would be to table a consideration of release of the bonds from Materita 2A and Phase 2 Corina, pending resolution of the pipe, and I'll call it Track L Materita Phase 1. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take that direction. And on that point, I received a letter today from an attorney representing WCI. It says, well, we disagree. And by the way, what you alleged are maintenance issues, and he mentioned Morris Riley, and I guess you forgot that portion of my letter where I outlined all the defects. And so I sent it on to the staff. And I just thought that was kind of interesting, but they also.
Senior moment.
I, I don't know, but the Morris Riley report I attached was for one simple purpose alone. I didn't care about the sediment in the pipes. I had nothing to do with the defect. I've mentioned, I've attached the Morris Riley reports because if they want to come back at us about the timing of this, those reports reflected that the lengths of the pipe were the lengths of the pipe for the plant. But the lengths of the pipes in the ground ain't the lengths of the pipes for the plant.
Didn't equal it, right?
Yeah, and not the same. And we don't have the flare end. So what I've asked staff to do is find some available times in the next two weeks to coordinate a field inspection by whatever inspectors they want to send out.
So, so our deal is until we get some assurance back that they're going to cooperate and deal with us on that.
We're not going to release.
We said.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting that he went after the Morris Riley. And really, it was a whole section of my letter that says, here are the defects. This pipe has no flare ends. This pipe is too short.
What part of that gateway as built, as found, did he not understand?
I don't know.
Yeah.
But then I, I have an email from my, my receptionist that he called me this afternoon. I will, once we get our dates and times, I'll send it to him and I'll say also.
Please, please, just put this on the, on hold until we get our response.
Yep, I will let Lenar know as well that that was what was decided at the board meeting. My buddy Alex.
Get to the next one. Fun, fun, fun. ATM Gary.
Yes, Chairman, board members, I've presented to you a memo on litorals. And I know you've discussed this issue for quite a while, but you do have that ATM report, which came up, I think, last August. And I've talked about it. And the staff just needs some clarification on whether or not you're happy with the way things are being done now, or if you'd like to use recommendations in that report to kind of clarify some of the issues. And the one that I pointed out was consider removing the language that allows for complete removal of litoral areas and selected areas. And if that's something the board would like to explore, I would refer to Tony for his input and see what has to be done at that end.
I could go one of two ways on this. Go to Tony because some of this stuff is really, really complicated that the county created here. They're not clean in this mess and they know damn good and well they're not clean. And I think John Fadima, because that's why I wrote what he wrote. I'm, I'm basically the same place Jim is on this. I just don't trust this group at all. I, first of all, don't know what, not saying that something happened that was strange, but it just looked like they came back with what somebody wanted.
Spoon fit.
Not what.
Something spoon fit.
Yes. And you said something earlier, and at first I thought, I'll skip that. But I think it may not be. We could spend hours going over this, and this would be a, just a monumental debate, and it's going to get into a legal deal. I don't think it's worth. If we feel that something of this needs to be done to authenticate what we have done in the past on two versions of the pond standard, I would have a much better feeling is that we would go out and interview, staff can narrow it down, but interview maybe a couple of firms locally that do this kind of work that could come back and do what we thought we were going to get from him, which was going to be a critique of our standards, not a complete, just saying, hey, scrap this. Don't, don't pay attention to 10418. Don't do this. Do it my way. Uh-uh. That's, that's not what I envisioned we were going to get from this guy. But again, I don't know what we ask him to do. So if, to save a lot of time on this, I would be willing to take and say, let's look and see if we can get a good vendor that would do this same type of a review of our pond standard, only this time come back with what we asked for the first time, is where do we have fallacies or shortcomings with the pond standards we do, if any, if any, or what improvements can we do relative to this issue? But.
Yeah, and my position on this is, is, again, I've, I've said countless times, I think there's more knowledgeable board members around this subject than I am. But what we keep coming back to is our existing pond standards. I, I think, and what I hear is, for the most part, I think we're pretty directionally correct with, with the standard that we have. We've tried to, to, you know, kind of, you know, poke holes in our existing standard. We're look, I think what we're looking to do is trying to get the best document we possibly can. However, we're not in a position organizationally to, I think, maintain or even drive a best-in-class pond standard. I mean, from a cost perspective, from a manpower perspective, what I would like to see us do, and this is just my personal opinion, is take what we have, bring that up to standard, or at least adhere to that piece for a year or two. And we can, we can get additional input, you know, as we go along. But I almost think we just need to put a line in the sand and manage to that. As long as we don't think that there's anything egregious in our existing pond standard, or that there's something that's going to put us at risk for, you know, for future operation or cost, I almost feel like we need to stick with what we have if we all agree in principle that what we have is about as good as we can get it right now. Because we don't have additional funding to do any drastic changes or to implement new policies or procedures, because we just can't afford it right now. So that's my personal opinion, and I'll, I'll sit back and listen to everyone else.
I'll, I'll, I agree with that. It's, it's money thing, and it's not only the money of the capital to involve, invest in this thing. It's the operation and maintenance is where the expense is. And right now, I'm, I'm really interested, Doug, is if we can get staff, and I, I don't care how we do it, but let's see some math, some science, that's the term now, I guess. Let's see some science that says we have a problem in any pond to where we have issues of litorals versus no litorals. Let's science that says, hey, you've got a problem. And if that science goes back and says, hey, these ponds, whatever the parameter we use says that we've got a problem, litoral ponds with DOs versus non-litoral ponds DO, then you got my attention.
We already.
Well, I do want to add one thing before, and then I'll let other people jump in. But, you know, I think Jim had mentioned something. He focused a lot on water quality and litorals and, and kind of poking holes in that. And, and I, I can't say that I disagree with, you know, whatever, because again, I'm just, I'm not as knowledgeable. But water quality is not the only driver for litorals, from what I understand. There's, you know, litorals can't provide, you know, benefit to stabilization around the banks. And, and that's what we spend a lot of money. And so I just want to make sure that we're not just talking in one direction. When we're talking about litorals or the, or the benefits to the standard in, in general, we need to be looking at holistically, you know, in the whole concept of, of what the maintenance is. It's to, you know, we're spending a lot of money on these ponds. We need to make sure that what we have done, that it stays intact from an erosion perspective, that it, you know, does create, promote good water quality. And then again, it is aesthetically pleasing, but that's, that's the last on my list. So I'll.
We have problems in our system relative to both escarpment and slope on ponds that we have heretofore said we're not going to touch, i.e. the golf course and the commercial and that. If we want to talk about that, now there's a place you got my attention because we've been arguing that for some time. I'd love to see going into these ponds, using some of these more cost-effective approaches, including litorals. And the golf course would certainly be amenable to it, going in there and doing the litorals there where we don't want to spend the hardened surface methodology that's $180 a running foot. We don't want to do that. So that would be another alternative. I wouldn't have a problem with it all. You, you have my backing on that. But that, that, that gives us a lot of room to not create a, I just think, a nightmare with the citizens on this issue of going any other way.
The only thing that I have to add is I think it's working now. If, I would be concerned if staff came to the board, which I don't believe they ever did, seeing those areas that we removed it. Now we have a problem. As of now, it's been two years, nothing was formally reported to us. So I, I think we should continue to watch, but I think we should just stay with the current standards and continue to hold the vendor accountable for what's there. Now, that doesn't mean that six months or a year down the road, suddenly we see a decline of those areas that we remove it, then we address it there. But as of right now. Yeah, we, as of right now, continue tomorrow. As of right now, I mean, are you aware of anything, Laura or Gary, that they came?
The only thing that I appreciate is L, as we're doing each pond, she's making a note of where the litorals are placed. And so you'll have some reference in the years to come as to what the, where the litorals are and what the job they're doing.
Yeah, I guess.
You didn't have that before.
If the areas behind Jim, Justin, Hampton Park, are we seeing a decline on the slope of those areas, erosion? And as of right now, if she's doing the inspection and she's not reporting it, I'm going to assume that they were not having it.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I know that the, the report that I did get back is that it's not that we're having a problem with erosion from taking out the litorals. It's, it's other things. These ones moving in, it's the, you know, the habitat, that, that those things are getting disruptive. But it's not the, the slope is not being affected.
I have.
It has other impacts.
Yes, I have seen that impact. I would say that I have seen invasive and nuisance species come in instead of the litoral, but thinking erosion or water quality, I have not seen a decline.
So at this point in time, we look for the next six to 12 months to monitor and then make a determination as to whether we would want a second opinion or whatever we do next.
So status quo for six to 12 months?
Go ahead.
My issue is not with the report. I'll take it as prima facie. My issue is why we would have one pond treated one way and another pond treated another way. And when they got getting all tied up in the, the DRIs and the DOs and all this other stuff, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. If it is beneficial to a pond, you have litorals for whatever reason, cleanliness of the water, erosion, wave washout, then it ought to be good for every pond in the community. We're spending a lot of money on pond bank replenishment. I don't think a two-year snapshot will tell you that something's good or bad. I mean, these ponds are 20 some years old, and now we've reached the point where we're doing what we're doing. I would support the activity, and I don't want to spend any more money on reports. But if you don't have confidence in the ATM, that you being the board, then let's get somebody we do have confidence in, in whatever document they come out with. Because it comes down to really, are litorals beneficial or are they not? Now, to Gary's point of consider removing the language that allows for removal, I wouldn't support that either because we have found that if an individual homeowner, for whatever reason, doesn't want the litorals, I'm, I'm okay with that guy not having to live with it, but not to go through a whole pond, not en masse, and do it. So that's kind of where I come out. I mean, we're spending millions and millions of dollars. And maybe going in, one of our prerequisites should have been to our neighborhoods, we will fix your pond from the pond bank. But when we're done, when we walk away, we're going to have litorals so we don't have this again.
Well, you could have litoral only if you amend the DO. I wouldn't support, I wouldn't support us just going in and adding it because.
We'll amend the DO or whatever legally we got to do.
If we have amended, and then if the board agrees to amend that particular, for that particular pond, there is no pushback from the community, then I would support that.
Well, I don't know if it'd be a community pushback or not. But if it's a good decision, it's a good decision. It may not be the right political.
Yeah, I think we'd, we'd have some difficulty if we probably do an amendment to it. We'd have some real difficulty.
But there are ways of doing that, and Tony has provided in the past. And I've talked to somebody at Lee County, and there's some inexpensive ways.
Oh, yeah.
But the issue that we have right now is because of the fact that this has gone 20, 25, 30 years on some of these ponds, the methodologies we've got to go in and fix them just aren't a lot. We have done about everything.
I completely agree. I'm trying to go flash forward, is I don't want to be repeating and be in this position again. And that's why I just feel so strongly that the litorals are beneficial to the community, not to me or anybody else, but they will protect our investment.
And I agree with that as well. So it's.
Where we have ponds, where we have ponds coming up in the future that we have not yet addressed, any of those ponds that have DOs with litoral requirements, then we can look at those and have other options to look at. I still have a problem from engineering perspective with this crappy soil here of how you get that bank stabilized and continue to be stabilized while you wait for the litorals to grow. That is a problem. That's a problem.
But I just hate to see us go through another season of remediating bank restoration and walk, and I don't know that we're walking away. I'm just supposing that we're going to walk away without planting litorals. I think that's wrong.
I think you've given me enough direction to push on and.
Okie dokie.
And if I would ask, that you would ask staff to look at the reports, I know she's keeping a log, L, of all the requests, I want her to visit maybe by the next meeting, all those sites that we had full removal. And if she can note any, you know, from grasses to erosion, anything, if she can bring a report more specific to that, the impacts, the impacts of the removal.
Yeah, I would be amazed if that's going to be visible within even three or four years. That takes a long time.
Thank you.
Okay. So I got it, Gary?
Yep.
Thank you. Discussion of, selection of auditing firms. I don't know about the rest of you. Steve, you online? Steve?
Yeah, he's there.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
See, I'll ask you this question, and it may, it just might, maybe my opinion only. I read that one pages that you said, and to me, boy, unless somebody knows something I don't know, this looks like a no-brainer that could take all of about 15 seconds to make the motion to stay with the guy we're with.
First of all, you have to, you have to, is the auditing committee first, make recommendations to the board, make the recommendation is the auditing committee, and then the board picks up the recommendation of the auditing committee. Correct, Steve? Are we the? Are we? Go ahead, Stephen.
The, the board is, is acting as the audit committee. And as the audit committee, they then would make the recommendation back to the board, and then the board would take the action.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, but I would push the idea then that as the auditing committee, based upon the information that's provided in this, that we recommend to the board to stay with the present firm as the, don't use your favorite phrase, the best, most cost-effective.
Reasonable, responsible.
Reasonable, responsive.
No, fine.
And I'll second that.
I'll take it.
For the record. If you name the firm for the record.
The firmer, firmer. The name of the firm is Burnel Tubes, Elam Gaines and Frank.
That's recommendation. Motion is to run to the board of supervisors for selection is the auditor for your, uh.
On 1/22.
22 and 2023.
Yes, that, that would be my motion.
Stephen, you okay with that?
I, yes, I am.
So do, can we then adjourn the?
No, you need to make, you need to vote on that first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any, any discussion on that? If not, I'd make the call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 I vote. Now, the board is meeting in its capacity now as the board of supervisors heard, has heard the, the board sitting as the audit committee. And so the appropriate action is to take an action on the recommendation of the audit committee as to your selected auditor.
You know how silly that sounds.
Is he setting?
You know how silly that sounds?
The turntable over there?
Turn your head, get it.
All right, I'll make that recommendation.
You're making the recommendation motion that.
To accept the recommendation of the audit committee.
To accept.
I like what I said before.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I vote.
You all would enjoy the governor and cabinet because they sit as the Florida Land and Water Duty Controlling Commission. They sit, these are the state internal improvement trust fund. They sit as the cabinet. They have, they have hats. They sit as the state internal improvement trust fund. They sit as the cabinet. They have the pulp hats.
This is just a no-brainer. I understand why we had to do it, but it was just a no-brainer to me. Okay, right on. Consent agendas. Does anyone have any item they want to pull on our board meeting minutes?
None for me.
Bill, Gary?
I'm powering through it to see if I find any yellow.
That's what I do. If I don't do that, I'm in trouble.
I'm good.
Hearing none would accept a motion to approve consent agenda items.
I make this motion.
A through J?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. 5-0. Future board business. We have the meeting at the Pelican Preserve for the February 24th on the President Council meeting. Are we still looking on the agenda? I saw something the other day. Did we have topics?
We have not received any topics from anybody.
I think.
If you have anything, you can send them to Georgia.
The arborist now would be one.
I would also want to just update them on the DRI amendment. Hopefully, that would have taken place by then. That's just an informational item.
And I'd like to.
PPA could probably do that, too.
Okay.
Or PPC.
I can give an update on the license plate readers.
Okay.
Yeah, the bank replenishment, the next bonds and where that is.
Yeah, the next project pond's coming up.
I think the bids will be, yeah, I don't know if we'll have the, yeah, I can get some information on the list of which ones they are.
Yeah, let us know on that.
Do you want me to ask the arborist to come, or you, would you want me just to give an update on basically?
Not yet.
Just the fact that we're.
Okay, so this is the services they're going to provide. Okay, okay.
Pass that on to.
Okay, sure.
Supervisor comments. Doug?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Bill?
I'm good.
Bob?
No, except for the president's meeting, we ought to update him where we are with the, filling our district manager position in the public works. Just give him a little. Okay, that's all I've got. Bobby?
Me, just a question. Have we heard anything from the roundabout by the school, that we reach out to the county?
We've not heard anything. My thought, the notes that I had from the last meeting was that Doug was going to take that. Sorry, Doug.
Did you hear that, Doug?
I did check it before the meeting today to make sure. The Tetra Tech task authorization that was not approved, and Doug said that he would reach out.
Did you feel?
Okay. Thanks for the reminder.
Sorry.
I had just a couple of, I was of the understanding that I heard somebody say something about it. Is the county going to be making a presentation to us on the roundabout out here as it relates to the fountain?
I can take that. We got, I think Tony was copied on it. They sent over the paperwork to make an amendment to the, there's some agreement.
Interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement that they're going to, we don't have the design for the fountain yet. Just the agreement would just allow them, that they're going to pay for the cost of putting it in, and then once it's in, it's up to us.
Yes.
But we do not have plans or costs, or, no, we have not. That's all I've seen so far is interlocal agreement.
Because I thought that they were going to have something around the first of February.
Yeah, what I would suggest is to follow up to that.
I will, well, there's a meeting, they have their next roundabout meeting right before the board meeting, so I should have, for the, I'll have an update on the third.
Well, I would suggest maybe invite them to appear and present it to the board.
Once they have the design.
I thought that's what was going to happen.
Yeah, they, I have not actually seen a design. It was my understanding that it's still out, they haven't gotten it back yet, was the last I had heard.
And then the other one I had is that the fiasco we had over in Gateway Green said, God, I hope that nobody else has to run through this. We need to take and Tony get some ruling from you, because our staff really got put behind the eight ball up there with this mess where we have three service laterals coming out, and we had a damage that was not on a guy's property. And I don't know what the dollar item was. My thing is, is that, and Kitty and I had a little bit difference of opinion, and I'll go to whatever Tony says. We need to send that invoice, as far as I'm concerned, to Comcast. Kitty's opinion was that invoice has to come to our HOA that sends it to Comcast. I, I don't know which is the way to do that.
I'll give. Kenny, Austin and I have had this conversation before, and Kenny, and part of what we were going to come back, I have an opinion.
I've been accumulating the invoice costs, too, so.
Yeah, I have an opinion based upon the current rules of the district and utility. Who's responsible for where, when we have these laterals and the multilateral connections? This particular one of the three I've not been involved in, and then we talked briefly, Mr. Tinkler, you and I. But I'll get with Kenny and Austin, and then I'll give my advice to the board opinion. But also, we were talking about, Kenny and I were talking in the past about coming to the board with some clarification for the district's rule as to responsibility.
Yeah, because it's a bad situation when you get out there in the field, and one, you know you've got a problem, but you know what the heck it is. And then when people are telling you the did, or you suspect did it, or they're doing a Pontius Pilate saying, I didn't have anything to do with it. Your pipe is three feet below where our bullets at. Well, yeah, it's where your bullet is at now, but where was your bullet when you first put it in? It deflected down and hit the pipe, because we have the smoking gun, we have the hole, and we have the burn in the pipe. But the question I'm just trying to get an answer to, since I get to wear the hat of the receiver of the invoice of how this thing's going to go relative to a pass-through to Comcast.
I'll get with Kenny and Austin.
That's all I had. Anything else? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn. Thank you all.
Wow, thank you.